We're ready. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, August 18th. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item.
Mayor Newsom, before we move on to ceremonial items, would you like me to take roll call?
I blew right through that. Sorry. Yes, city clerk, please take roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. Thank you. Well, we have a large crowd today with four ceremonial items. The first ceremonial item is the College of San Mateo Softball Championship recognition. And we would like to invite Nicole Quigley Borg, the head coach to the podium for opening remarks. Welcome, Coach.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. As a resident of San Mateo County my entire life and a former Bulldog myself, this is a really special moment for the College of San Mateo softball program. On behalf of my coaching staff and my players, we would like to thank the City Council for recognizing our successful 2025 season with the state championship, the second in our college softball history at the College of San Mateo. And I'd like to introduce the players that are here today and also the ones that are not with us. First, we have Emma Kinder. All right, Emma Kinder. Liliana Williams. Kendall Barmore. Malia Castro. Ally Phillips. Not in attendance tonight, Tasia Warren. Ava Mendoza. Nia Mapa. Keith Lane Gonzalez. La Vanita Cabanas. Rio Castillo. Alexa Elzy. Gianna Tasio. Sierra Posco. Katie Johnson. Cece Kim. Not in attendance tonight, Daniela Simon. Jessica Gutierrez. Noemi Livingston. Vanessa Mitri. Kirsten Wick. Kaylee Palos. Juju Madrigal. Hannah Ames. Assistant Coach Emily McAdams. Assistant Coach Ally Steins. Assistant Coach Matt Lawrence. Assistant Coach Dale Bassman. Assistant Coach Randy Vazan. And not in attendance tonight, Assistant Coach Toby Garza. Thank you very much again for your recognition.
If everybody can open their certificates and make sure it's right reading, so hold them open. Thank you.
Do you want me to go in the back or am I good right here?
I think you're great where you are.
Okay. I've never done this before. It's weird speaking with your back to people.
I know. I know. It's bizarre. And then you look up and you're seeing yourself on TV.
Yeah. There's a lot of us.
We have the football team, so if we can fit the football team on the podium.
Yeah.
Pretty incredible peak. There are two championship teams for CSM.
Yeah.
All right, on three, go Bulldogs. One, two, three, go Bulldogs!
Yeah, you know, the interesting thing about both of our state championships is we both won them in the same years.
I know. Congratulations again, Coach.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. Appreciate it.
All right, we're going to continue. The next ceremonial item tonight is recognition of the 101st Airborne Bastogne Ball. We have a presentation by Linda Patterson and a proclamation. And Martin McTiger. Introduction remarks will happen with our city clerk, Martin McTiger.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Newsom. Before we recognize Mrs. Linda Patterson, I would like to share a brief presentation regarding the city's recent visit to the 101st Airborne Base to participate in the Bastogne Brigade Ball. For those who are not familiar with our city's relationship with our adopted unit, on December 18th, 1964, during the Vietnam War, a young soldier named Joseph Gregory Artavia wrote home to his sister concerned that his unit was receiving little mail or encouragement from back home. In response, the City of San Mateo answered that call. On March 4th, 1968, our city council unanimously voted to adopt Alpha Company, 1st Battalion, 327th Infantry Regiment, 1st Brigade, 101st Airborne Division, also known as the Screaming Eagles. What began as a letter-writing campaign grew into an outpouring of support from students, churches, community groups, and residents across San Mateo. At the close of the war, San Mateo was the only city in the nation to hold a homecoming parade specifically honoring those returning veterans, welcoming them not only as heroes but as members of our own community. This relationship endures more than 50 years later. To this day, San Mateo remains proud to have been the first city in our country to adopt a military unit, paving the way for National Adopt a Unit Program, now supported by America Supporting Americans. Our partnership with the 101st Airborne at Fort Campbell, Kentucky continues as a lasting testament to friendship, gratitude, and community. The city was honored The city was honored to be invited by ABOU to attend the Bastogne Brigade Ball. On June 17th, Councilmember Danielle Sverko Guditsky and myself traveled to Fort Campbell, Kentucky. Upon arrival, we attended a celebration at the USO where Councilmember Sverko Guditsky addressed the unit, presented ABOU with a plaque in commemoration of our special relationship, and recognizing the 60th anniversary of the 101st deployment to Vietnam, and received special recognition in the form of two plaques seen on display here at the front of the chamber. Today, ABOU consists of over 138 soldiers, many of whom we had the privilege of spending time with, learning their stories. We now have a short photo presentation for you, which we hope you enjoy. That concludes our video presentation.
Thank you for a great presentation. It looks like it was a great event. Can we please, Mr. Clerk, see if there are requests to speak in public comment?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. We have not received any requests to speak in chambers and we do not have any hands. We have one request to speak on this item.
I thought there might be one. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I want to thank each of you for your service. I feel compelled to speak on this issue. Linda and Steve are two incredible people. Linda has inspired so many people. Her service to the soldiers, her lifetime of service to the soldiers, has inspired so many. And I know from my time on the council that the time that I spent with the 101st was some of the most rewarding that I had. And so for her to share that with me has made my life more meaningful and I was able to share that with my kids. I think that the gift that she has given to the City of San Mateo and the gift that she gives to the soldiers continues to inspire all of us. And so I am filled with gratitude and I just wanted to express that to Linda and Steve tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Linda, we would now invite you to come up to the dais. Nope, you're next. Linda, we would now invite you to come up to the dais. We're going to read a proclamation and then my fellow council members will have an opportunity to make remarks. I just want to make sure she didn't think I was cutting her out. All right, the proclamation from the City of San Mateo. Whereas in December 1967, Linda Patterson received a letter from her brother Sergeant Joe Artavia of the 101st Airborne Division, asking her to have the City of San Mateo adopt his unit to lift their morale as high as the clouds during the Vietnam War. And whereas Linda's powerful words inspired the City Council to become the first city in America to officially adopt a military unit serving in Vietnam, establishing a historic and enduring bond with the 101st Airborne Division. And whereas Sergeant Artavia's death in combat in March 1968, Linda dedicated her life to honoring his vision, founding America Supporting Americans, a nonprofit linking hundreds of military units with communities nationwide. And whereas this year marks 57 years since San Mateo first adopted the 101st Airborne, a relationship that remains strong today as demonstrated by the city's June 25th delegation visit to Fort Campbell, Kentucky, celebrating the continuing friendship between San Mateo and the Screaming Eagles. And whereas Linda's decades of dedication have ensured that San Mateo's adopted sons and daughters are never forgotten, inspiring generations to uphold the values of service, gratitude, and community. Now, therefore I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby recognize and honor Linda Patterson for her visionary leadership, lifelong commitment to our nation's forces, and for forging a lasting bridge between the City of San Mateo and the 101st Airborne Division that continues to unite our community across generations with sincere appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Before you go, we are now going to have some of my fellow council members make some remarks. And I know someone over here is itching to make a remark. Councilmember Sverko.
Thank you. And actually, could we have Steve Patterson come up as well? So I want to thank you both for joining us here tonight. And just so the public knows, Steve is a Vietnam veteran. He's a two-time Purple Heart recipient. He also received a Bronze and a Silver Star and the Order of St. Michael, which is the highest order you can receive in the airborne, I believe. So I think we definitely owe him a round of applause for his service. And I just, you know, I had the honor of spending time with both of you in Fort Campbell, Kentucky this summer as we visited the airborne and San Mateo's adopted sons. There's 138 men and women in our unit. Linda, you are an extraordinary advocate for the airborne, dedicating decades to supporting troops and their families. Your commitment to enhancing the lives of service members reflects a deep understanding of their sacrifices and challenges. Thanks to your effort and the board at Americans Supporting Americans, you have fostered strong ties and ensured that local military units, 300-plus units across the United States now, receive the recognition and resources that they deserve. And I want to thank you for your passion for service and relentless advocacy because you're really an inspiring and remarkable figure. And I want to thank Steve for, you know, I know you guys met in Vietnam. Linda actually flew there during the war without government approval to give the troops medals and medallions that were made here in San Mateo and to show how much Samateans care for them and you've continued to do that for the last 60-plus years. There's also a few other people that I wanted to thank. So former mayor of San Mateo, Joe Gothel, who's here tonight, he's actually on the board. So Joe is on the board for the Americans Supporting Americans. Maureen Friscat unfortunately is sick, but Maureen is also a big advocate and has actually visited Fort Campbell as well. And I know that she, with many others, worked in Central Park to make sure that there's recognition at our memorial. And there's a memorial in Fort Campbell that Samateans actually funded and helped support for the troops in Vietnam. I also wanted to give some shout-outs and recognition to Samateans who are no longer with us. So Vera Graham from the San Mateo Times. She met Linda many decades ago and continued to write about the airborne over the last 30-plus years at the San Mateo Times and continue that legacy, as well as Noi Chantalope and the Lions Club. I read that in Linda's book. They ran around all over the peninsula to get resources and help kind of inspire and lift you up. So they definitely deserve recognition. And I want to thank the San Mateo Elks Club, who is now working with Linda and the city. They will be hosting a packaging event in November before the holidays for the unit. So if anyone's interested in getting involved and coming out and supporting our troops, that's an opportunity for you to actually engage and, you know, be part of it. And the unit shared something with me, which was they were deployed to Poland last year and the only care packages and letters they got were actually from San Mateo during their deployment. And it meant a lot to them. Some of these people, you know, they go out and they don't hear from anybody. And it's really touching that, you know, we're continuing to push this advocacy and do this work. So thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Wow, that's wonderful, wonderful. And I just would like to make a few remarks to this fantastic, wonderful city council and a city with a heart is what our troops, generation after generation, has referred to their adopted city. You are a treasure. The story is long, the journey is long. Since 1968, the beginning of time for me, the change of life when I went to Vietnam as a representative of the City of San Mateo with two suitcases full of medallions, the city's token of appreciation for those soldiers that were coming out of that jungle after nine months of fighting to see what the city meant to them after what they heard so much of at home that was going on. And I'm sure everybody knows how our Vietnam vets were treated. But the exception to the rule was my brother's unit because of his last letter. If you could get the City of San Mateo, sis, to adopt us for morale support, it would raise the morale as high as the clouds. And members of the council, Mayor, you have gone beyond those clouds. You have reached the heavens for many of our fallen soldiers. My husband and I, you saw the monument, Danielle, of 792 names of fallen soldiers within that one regiment. But City of San Mateo never forgot. There's been movies on Vietnam Countless that have come out. And what is the only thing that they ask? Don't forget us. And believe me, this city, in this country, in this state, has made such a total memory to this day that I am still in touch with these six, which were 19- and 20-year-olds. Our 60, 70, well, not even 60 anymore, they're in their 70s. And they think of San Mateo all the time. They wear that medallion around their neck. And it means so much to them. You know, when they asked me to write a story, write a book, Linda, tell our story about that city and us, I did on their behalf. And Joe, thankfully, Joe made such a mention of it when I first published it. It's called "A Dove Among Eagles" and it tells a unique story, but it's a love story, everybody. It's a love story between a city and our troops and a country. It's a love story between a sister and a brother. And it's a love story, God willing, brought my lieutenant home when I first met him in Saigon at my military escort. He said, "I'm going to be your military escort while you're here." Well, I guess he didn't know it's going to be for 57 years and forever at that time. But in any event, I want to thank you again for this most beautiful tribute that I will treasure all my life. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So much feel-good tonight. All right, our next ceremonial item is recognizing Sue Lempert. Yeah, we can clap. We're going to be recognizing Sue Lempert with a Mayor's Corally Hero Award and a proclamation from the City of San Mateo. And before we do, I'd like to see if there are public comments. And I have a suspicion that there are.
Yes, Mayor Newsom, we have received requests to speak. So I will first invite up Emily Beach.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. So thrilled that Sue Lempert is earning this award tonight and this recognition, so deserved for her work here in the City of San Mateo, but also on behalf of the San Mateo County Transit District. I'm the chief communication officer there. I also want to just say a note about what an incredible regional transportation leader Sue has been in our community for so many years, including her service on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for many years. So we honor that at the Transit District and her reputation for being a smart, strong advocate, level-headed and thoughtful, and we appreciate. So on behalf of all the agencies that we serve, including Samtrans Bus, Caltrain, the express lanes on the highway, and the Transportation Authority, thank you for your leadership. And on a personal level, thank you for being a wonderful friend and a mentor. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Congressman Kevin Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It took me a little time to walk down that aisle coming off of fourth surgery on my knee, but I am not going to miss tonight because we get to honor somebody who is so special to the City of San Mateo. So, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity. It's an honor for me to be with you and it's an honor for me to represent the City of San Mateo in the U.S. House of Representatives. I am excited to be with you to celebrate a San Mateo icon, the amazing Sue Lempert. For years, her column was a Monday must-read. Like other budding politicos at the time, I would hope for a mention in her column because I knew everybody who was involved in politics in the county would have eyes on that column every week. She was able to leverage her years of civic leadership here in the city and in the county and in the region, the expertise that she brought, and channel that into an insightful, weekly column that connected the San Mateo County community and our county really as a whole. Sue, you are nothing short of a community treasure and we are all so very grateful for your service to this community and to our region. And with that, if you'll indulge me, I'll read just a few of the wheresses on this House of Representatives resolution. Whereas Sue Lempert's thoughtful perspective grounded in deep experience from her time in public office provided unrivaled insight into the world of local government and politics as well as broader cultural and societal issues. And whereas Sue Lempert's And whereas Sue Lempert's strong sense of local history has been an invaluable asset to readers, her expert commentary and evolving stories offer unique perspectives on local political developments and culturally relevant topics. And whereas Sue Lempert represents the highest order of dedicated community public service, her voice will be greatly missed in the column section where for 20 years she offered profound and insightful wisdom for generations of readers. Her absence will leave a meaningful gap in the civic dialogue she helped foster for so many years. Therefore, the Honorable Kevin Mullen, Member of Congress, 15th District, extends his warmest congratulations to Sue Lempert for her dedicated and exemplary service and wishes her the best in her future endeavors dated 18th of August, 2025. Sue, it is an honor to be with you. We are all so very grateful for your service, and you will be missed on those Mondays, but we will continue to seek your wisdom in many ways. So thank you all for the opportunity, and congratulations, Sue. God bless you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Charles Stone.
Took me as long as Kevin, and I don't have an excuse. I don't know what to say about that. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your service and thank you for this wonderful honor for all of our friend and mentor, Sue Lempert. I have the perspective of someone who grew up in San Mateo under the leadership of Sue and read about her for years in the local newspapers, and then was lucky enough to meet her and lucky enough to receive her wisdom and lucky enough to appear in her column, usually for good-ish reasons. So that was very nice. When I was selected to serve on the SAM Trans Board by my colleagues in 2015, somewhat unexpectedly, I found myself pretty far out over my skis. Transit is nowhere as easy as people think it is, and oftentimes altercations arise with other counties. And having Sue's institutional knowledge and repository of wisdom on speed dial enabled me to be the voice for San Mateo County that I wanted to be, and I will be forever grateful to her for that. Sue is and always will be an integral thread in the tapestry of San Mateo politics and government. And Sue has done what she's done because she loves this county. You don't put that much of yourself into local government, as all of you and many of you in the audience know, unless it comes from a place deep in your heart of love for local service and government. And then to continue on after she was off the council at MTC, fighting for San Mateo County for years, and then to stay involved writing a column that frankly doesn't exist most places in the United States, and a quick thank you to Jerry Lee and John Mays at the Daily Journal for enabling her to do so. I don't think folks realize how rare it is to be able to pick up a local newspaper for free at the coffee shop and get the highest quality information about what's going on in your community, and a lot of that was thanks to Sue. So Sue, my dear friend and mentor, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Gothos.
Good evening again, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to speak again. A titan, a legend, someone who is no stranger to difficult meetings and difficult issues, inspirational in her leadership, probably for my money, the greatest public servant in San Mateo and my favorite mayor. My favorite is Sue as a mentor. I myself had some difficult meetings, and there were, there were times, especially during COVID, when I thought, am I doing the right thing? And there is nothing better for an elected official than to get a phone call from Sue Lempert and for her to tell you that you're doing the right thing and that she's proud of you. One of the greatest things that I will eternally be grateful for, Sue, thank you so much for your mentorship of me and for everything that you have done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Assemblymember Diane Papen.
Well, I don't have a limp, but I do have high heels on, so I don't know what that counts for, gentlemen. Well, it is my pleasure to be here tonight to present a resolution from the state legislature on behalf of myself and Senator Josh Becker. So before presenting it, I would like to say a few remarks. And a couple of things come to mind when thinking of Sue. The first is that all politics is local, as we well know. Well, Sue took it to a masterclass in knowing about how politics is local, whether it was on the San Mateo Foster City School Board, so that was all of us who had kids in elementary school, then high school, then the city council, then transportation. And while on the city council, lest we not forget, things like Bay Meadows, which was a transformation to a very large part of our city, and it took a lot of cobbling together of a lot of different voices. And because you understood so well that politics is local, we have added a tremendous amount of housing to this city. So that is not to go unnoticed, Ms. Lempert. Not to mention that you certainly have a long history with my family. So when I moved to San Mateo, it was such a pleasure to live in your neighborhood, to see you walking with that Stanford hat on in the mornings, and to get to know you as an adult and to get to know you as it related to politics and local politics in particular, which I feel is so immediate and so important. But there is one theme that runs through everything that we've talked about tonight, including your column, and the vanity in all of us waited for your column on Monday, I'm not gonna lie, myself included. But I think there's one theme that runs through all of it, and that is curiosity of mind. And you certainly had it. And every time I saw you, there was something you needed to talk about, there was something you had thought about, and it was always a pleasure to hear your thought process, what might have gone into it, maybe some institutional knowledge. And it has just been an absolute delight knowing you on my own, independent of my family that I know, my folks adored you during the time that you guys certainly spent together, but also for myself as an adult. I am tremendously grateful for the time and opportunity that I've had. And then it went to next generation because Sue doesn't get enough of public service. She then dedicated time back to our local middle school and did some, there was sort of, the class that you taught dealt with some famous literature art, literature works of art, and who was a part of that but my daughter. So she's, yeah, great books, that's what it was. And so we have three generations of Papens that have been affected by Sue in such a positive way, and gratitude is, seems like not the right word, not big enough. So thank you for all you do and have done, and yes, we'll be talking about your future as well. So thank you.
It's very good to have the Papens on your side.
As well as the Lemperts, looking right back at you. So without further ado, there are some lovely wheresses here. The last two are probably my favorite because they do talk about the import of public service, and not everybody feels it's as, is as important or dedicates such a curious mind to it. So on behalf of San Mateo and the state legislature, it's my honor to give you this resolution. So thank you, sir.
Our next speaker will be Hector Camacho.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. It's a real honor to be here to speak. Just a few words from the education community. My name's Hector Camacho, I'm at the San Mateo County Office of Education, and I had the pleasure of serving alongside another Lempert for 11 years on the Board of Ed. And it was through that work that I got to know Sue Lempert. And I want to say something about her service to schools because school boards, school board membership is one of the most thankless jobs that we have in our communities, and she did it with tremendous honor and with tremendous skill, all for the students of this community, first on the San Mateo Foster City School District and then on the San Mateo Union High School District Board. Now, we lost her to the city council, and that's okay, but one of the things that I took from learning from Sue was what I've hoped to adopt into my own form of service, and that is service before self and kids before everything. And what makes me so honored to be here to celebrate you, Sue, is that you have done what we all must do, and that is put the future ahead of us, and you've always done that for young people, including myself. I mean, maybe I'm not as young as I'd like to think, but you have put young people in the forefront and encouraged us to continue to do our part to make our communities a better place. So I'm eternally grateful to have known you and for your support over the years. Thank you for your mentorship and for your guidance and for your continued rooting for kids. Thank you, Sue.
Finally, our last speaker will be Rich Hedges.
I can't say enough about Sue. She's very much been my mentor in politics here in San Mateo County. I've always honored her. I watched her work with school board, and I can't think you can say enough about the first part of her public life and being on the school board and working with education. And she didn't just sit in meetings, she got out into the schools and worked with everybody to try to make education better for our students here. Her life on the city council, she led the city through some difficult times when the city was changing, and I might say here that if a city doesn't change with the times, it dies. And Sue helped lead us through some of those. I watched her here late one night when the development agreement on the city council was being hatched with Bay Meadows, where she held the council here even though they were tired, and went through all the details on that development agreement to make sure it was right. And we can see what's happened with that in the great new neighborhood we have in Bay Meadows. I watched her quietly be an advocate for that change and to make sure that we did it right. I watched her on Bay Meadows at the same time she was on MTC and working to make regional transit. She was one of the first ones to adopt the idea that transit-oriented development might be a good thing for our younger members of the community coming here who wanted options to ride transit. She mentored me after retiring from the union. She jumped on immediately and got me on the grand jury, which was somewhat a pleasure. And as she well knows, because she served on the grand jury too, and actually made me think at some point I might want to be on the city council, but it sort of bypassed me until the opportunity arose a couple of years ago. But I used her as a pattern for what I did on the city council because I watched her be so polite to people that disagreed with her and try to educate them on why the city council might want to make this move. And I've watched her, because I watched her style, come off of the podium after the meeting was over and meet with those people and talk to them in an extended way about why the city council was doing what they were gonna do. So she's a special person, and anybody on the council now or in the future could look at her as someone to guide them in what they do on the council. Thank you.
We know who he is.
I'm John Mays, I'm the editor-in-chief of the San Mateo Daily Journal.
Fire.
So I have had the pleasure of reading almost all of Sue's columns, about 1,000 of them or so. The only time I missed was when I was on vacation maybe a few times. And before I started reading those columns, I knew Sue from, you know, reporting on the city council in these chambers, and I hope that if these are ever redone, that somehow they're restored for historical purposes. These walls are a historic resource. But I remember in 1997, when I first started covering the city of San Mateo, there was a meeting and it was, I think it was around Cinco de Mayo, and I'm sitting right over there, it's kind of my spot, and Sue just hands me a burrito as she comes in from in between, and she's like, "It's gonna be a long night." And she was right, it was a long night, I don't know what the topic was, but I'm sure there was several. And so that's sort of, you know, those little things that Sue does, and she's indefatigable in so many ways, making sure that people are taken care of and are listened to, and she will, if you disagree with her, she will wear you down. She will wear you down until you say, "Yeah, you know, it's not a bad idea, Sue." And as someone who's read her columns over the years, it's one of those things, I didn't know her when she was on the school board, I didn't know her all the time, but I feel like I've gotten to know her through her columns. And she's sharing these stories about San Mateo with the community and sharing lessons from them. And so really, I kind of feel like Sue's a lifelong friend because I've known her for so long, and she's shared so much with me through her work, and she's shared that with everyone. So thank you so much, Sue, for all the time that you've given to not only the Daily Journal but the whole community, just a treasure.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before I read the proclamation, I would like to go through my city council colleagues and ask them if they would like to make statements. Please, Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, everybody who's here tonight to spend some time with this council and to honor Sue. So Sue, I can't really see you because Martin's screen is in the way, but I'm kind of looking at you. Look at all of the VIPs that you've brought out tonight, which is such a testament. Should I stand up? I can stand up. Okay, hi. Okay, can you see me now? Okay. So, I mean, look at the VIPs and the breadth of San Mateo that you've brought out tonight, which is such a testament to who you are. Congressman Kevin Mullen is here, former state senator Jerry Hill is here, Assemblymember Diane Papen, Richard Hollibur, Sarah Burdick, Hector Camacho, Ann Campbell, Ted Lempert, Brian Perkins on behalf of Supervisor Jackie Spear, and then council members Joe Gothos, Charles Stone, Emily Beach, Mark Hirschman, Rich Hedges, and Claire Mack. All of those people have disparate opinions on everything San Mateo County, but they're all here for you, which is what you do, you bring people together. And I also, while we're at it, I want to wish you a happy 94th birthday from last week and wish the Daily Journal a happy 25th anniversary as well. I also want to just say that long before I knew Sue Lempert, I knew of Sue Lempert, and I knew you because I was really jealous that Sarah Phelps got to attend your holiday party every year, and I wasn't invited because you didn't know me, but I knew all the politicos were there, and I was like, "I want to be invited someday." But then I met her, I met you about five years ago when you profiled me for my position when I became district director for then-Senator Josh Becker, and I ran down my political bona fides and you replied, just in your perfectly wonderful, brash Sue Lempert way, "Wait, how have you worked for Jerry Hill and I don't know who you are?" And you were absolutely right, you're nobody in San Mateo until Sue Lempert knows you. I was lucky enough to even earn a nickname, "The Papa Joe of San Mateo," and I will get a crown with that someday. You've offered so much wisdom and humor to me over the past few years, even though we only met about five years ago. I see you as a mentor and as someone who shared your wisdom with me, and I'm very lucky to know you, and I'm incredibly grateful to have you on speed dial and to, you respond to my emails and you invite me over for tea, and I'm just incredibly grateful for who you are and what you've done for San Mateo. We are better for it. So thank you for what you've done. And then I just very quickly want to just, unfortunately Supervisor Noelia Corzo could not be here today, but she did send her regards with the proclamation, which she asked me to present to you, and so I just want to say that on behalf of Supervisor Corzo, congratulations on the mayor's quarterly award.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Thank you. Good evening, Sue. Everyone has spoken of Sue as a council member, a journalist, a school board member. I'm gonna speak about her as a neighbor and a friend. We moved into Baywood in 2013, and Sue was right up the We moved into Baywood in 2013, and Sue was right up the street on Virginia. And I didn't know Sue Lempert. I didn't know much about San Mateo, but I love to walk. And so I walked all over the place. And somewhere on one of those walks, there was Sue, and she came driving by in what is now her Toyota Prius. I forget what the car was back then, but same Prius, okay. There we go. But she stopped and she said, you're new, aren't you? How does this woman know who I am? But now I know because she's Sue Lempert. And I am just so grateful to have you as a friend, as a neighbor, as a curious mind. I mean, every conversation we have, whether it's going out for lunch or taking a tour around the neighborhood, you're always interested in what's happening. And you already know more about what's going on here than any of us, so I don't know why you're asking me. But you always want to know if there's something more, and you always want to know what the angle is, and you always want to know what you can do. And that's what's so amazing. And on her last column, before that happened, I was fortunate enough, we did a tour of all of the new development projects in San Mateo, all the things that were happening. So the people who talked about Sue always wanting to foster change and really make tomorrow in San Mateo better than today, that was such a great example. She wanted to see what was happening, where it was happening, because she had to write her last column about the future. And it is just such a pleasure to count you as a mentor, as a friend, as a neighbor, and as someone who loves a great party, which I know you're about ready to have. But we are all just so grateful and so excited to see what's going to come next. Because with that curiosity, and she said to me the other day, you know, after tonight on Tuesday morning, you know what I'm going to be? I'm going to be a has been. And she said that with that wry tone in her voice that we all know, when you know she's not serious. And we know that's about as far from the truth as that will be. So we all look forward to what will happen and what you will be. And thank you to everybody in this room who came out to show your love, support, and gratitude for Sue, who is everything to everyone. Thank you.
All right. Yes, you would like to say so. Okay. And Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Sue. Thank you very much for joining us and bringing with you so many others who have served the city of San Mateo in so many ways. I am just humbled and honored to be here tonight. It's truly a special evening in our city's history. And I'm inspired and refreshed by so many who, including yourself, who have served for so long for this special city that we're a part of. Thank you so much for all you have done and for showing those of us in many generations so many different ways in which you can serve your community. As others have mentioned, you brought about change during a particular generation in our city's history, honoring future generations and setting us up for success. And I'm grateful for that example you set. And then I think I'm appreciating that you didn't stop there and continue to find other ways to give after getting off the dais, after being a part of various boards and positions and titles. Being a part of local journalism, as others have mentioned, is a truly noble way to ensure that others in our community are aware of what's going on here and how they could potentially be a part of it and, you know, why it's important. And it gives, I think it can plant the seed within people such as myself to come to City Hall and learn what all is going on, what I learned about in Sue Lempert's column, and see how I can help and be a part of an enduring legacy. And it's truly fortunate that you're here with so many of us, including the Pattersons. To me, I just think there's so much collective experience and service here and showing why our city is so special. And I truly stand on the shoulders of giants to just be here. So thank you very much for setting your example and being with us tonight. And thank you to the mayor for honoring you in this way so that we could appreciate this special night.
Sue, it means so much to have you here and to be our quarterly mayor's hero. And, you know, when we were talking about who was going to be the quarterly hero for this quarter, it had come out that you were going to be retiring. And I was like, well, that's the person. That's the quarterly hero. In fact, if we could, we'd give you a year-long hero because you're many, many years of service to San Mateo. I've grown up in San Mateo, and having grown up in San Mateo, I've never not known the name Sue Lempert. I voted for you at least three times. You were on the school board while I was in school, which both makes, I'd say, you know, you're not that old, because see, I'm up here, so it's not that bad. But you were on the school board while I was in school. I voted for you in my first election, as I did for former Mayor Claire Mack in the back of the room. I really, you know, I've always known you and you are a San Mateo institution. You did so much that, and everybody's really recapped it, so I'm not going to go into it all over again, but you've done a lot to help revitalize downtown. You helped revitalize and reimagine Shoreview Park. You helped develop the Bay Meadows neighborhood, which is now in the heart of my district. And I ran actually for office twice. And when I ran the first time, my wife took sick. And so I didn't get to go full bore into the election campaign. And afterwards, I got this great article that said, I really hope that Robert Newsom runs again. And so when I did run again a couple of years ago, it was funny because I sat across from you and you're like, I don't know who you are. I don't know who you are. And then I sat down, you're like, oh, yes, I told you to run again. I'm glad you're back. And true to point, you were right. So I was elected and in no small part think that your endorsement helped. So very appreciative for all you've done for the city of San Mateo. And with that, I'm going to read the whole proclamation because it's our city. All right. Whereas Sue Lempert has dedicated her life to the service of others, leaving an enduring legacy through her tireless work on behalf of the people of San Mateo. And whereas Sue Lempert has served the city of San Mateo with integrity and distinction as a member of the city council from 1993 to 2005, including two terms as mayor from 97 to 98 and 2001 to 2002. And whereas during her time on the council, Sue was a tireless advocate for strengthening partnerships between the city and its neighboring public agencies, notably the San Mateo Foster City Elementary and San Mateo Union High School Districts, always seeking collaboration, approaches to serve youth and families. And whereas Sue's leadership extended far beyond City Hall, she served as the second vice president of the Peninsula Division of the League of California Cities. She contributed to the Community Service Policies Committee and the Youth at Risk Task Force. She played active roles in countless organizations, including the Rotary Club, the Friends of Education, the Long Term Care Committee, the Commission on Aging, the Commission of Cities, the Friends of the Early Learning Center, and Junior Statesman of the Foundation, which by the way, I was in. That's also where I knew you from. Whereas Sue was pivotal voice in shaping the future of Bay Meadows through thoughtful land use decisions, most notably opposing the proposed card room at Bay Meadows and instead helping guide the transformation of the racetrack into the thriving Bay Meadows that we now know today. Whereas she also led efforts to enhance community spaces throughout San Mateo, including advocating for the installation of fencing and landscaping at 19th Avenue Park and playing a key role in the creation of Shoreline Park and Bay Meadows Park and expanding access to safe, beautiful, and welcoming public spaces. And whereas, after concluding her council service in 2005, she found a new way to continue giving back to her community through the power of the written word as a columnist for the San Mateo Daily Journal, where for 20 years she offered insight, wit, context, and a connection to generations of readers. And whereas, in an ever-changing media landscape, Sue's voice has remained a beacon grounded in experience, guided by principle, and animated by her deep love of the city that she helped shape. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of San Mateo, the city of San Mateo City Council hereby honors and thanks Sue Lempert for her remarkable and lasting contributions to civic life, physical landscape, and public spirit for our community. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you very much. I must say, this is the first council meeting I've been to where no one's gotten up to attack me. So anyway, oh my God, how can I say thank you? How can I not shed a few tears? I'll be very brief. I wrote this down. Thank you to the city council for the special honor. Thank you to Kevin Mullen, my congressman and longtime friend, Assemblyman and neighbor Diane Pappin, and thank you to the other elected officials who are here. Please raise your hands. Former city staff, okay, wait a minute, no. Former council members or council members, raise your hand so we can all applaud you. They're doing better than I am. They can actually stand unaided. Okay. Thank you to the, thank Kevin, former elected officials, raise your hand. Have I done the former elected officials? Yes, okay. I just want to try to thank everybody. Okay. I have to introduce my family. I'm very sad my past husband isn't here because those of you who know him would say, come on, what's all this wasting time? Anyway, who is here? My son, Robert, who is an expert on global warming. You can Google him and see all the great things he's done. His son and my grandson, Ben Lempert. Ben, stand up. Ben is also, I have to read this, he works for the state protecting our finance. He's a lawyer for the Environmental Protection Agency, is that right?
Yeah, California District.
Okay, California District. My granddaughter Veronica Lempert, a daughter of Ted Lempert. And Veronica, just a little plug, anybody thinking of running for office, she's just opening her office as a political consultant.
Oh.
And she knows everybody in San Francisco. And last but not least is my helper Linda Pujey. Linda, please stand up. Without Linda, I wouldn't be here today. Anyway, oh, I see so many people in the audience. I wish I could introduce all of you. I love every single one of you. This is, as the council knows, the greatest job in the world is being on the city council is because you can do things for people. I mean, it's so great. I drive around and I say, oh, I had a hand in doing this. Or I had a hand in, what other kind of job you have where you could actually see things you've accomplished. And let's see, I'm so proud of so much I did with my council members. The movie theater, Claire Mack, someone said she was here, Claire Mack reminded me. The downtown movie theater, that's me. Sayuhi brothers, they thought, oh my God, we're not going to have a movie theater in this tiny little downtown, nobody will come. Well, I, with some help from city staff, talked them into it. And really, as the council knows, you're not anybody unless you have city staff. So let's get a big dance. Can you all hear me if my back is chirped? Okay. Some of the city staff who were with me at the time, and they're still alive too, which is amazing, I think are here tonight, and I thank them. I see John Derusi, Rotary friend, city best city, not the best, but one of the best city finance directors we've ever had. I wish I could introduce all of you. You've all been very important to my life. Let's see, my children advise no long speech, two sentence, sentence one. I love being on the city council, one of the greatest jobs in the world because you can do things for your community sentence. I am most proud of the development of Bay Meadows and the Bay Meadows Park, creation of the Shoreline Park, and the new San Mateo Library Building, and the downtown movie. I see Barbara Kautz, Jim Kautz, there are Tim Bissell, so many of the people. You never do anything alone. And so behind every council member's staff and people in the community. So isn't someone going to come up and say, how awful I am?
Sue, Sue, don't sit down just yet because we're going to take a picture. Sue, don't sit down just yet because we're going to take a picture.
I was running, skiing, and riding a bike.
I invite all former and current elected officials to come forward. Yes, I see you in the back, Congressman. I see you. All former and current electeds, please come forward for the photo. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to continue our council meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to continue our council meeting. If you'd like to continue to celebrate Sue Lempert, she's in Conference Room C. If you'd like to continue the festivities, Conference Room C. And if you'd like to join us to talk about things going on in San Mateo, please have a seat. Wow, 8:20 and we're still not through the ceremonial items. We have one more ceremonial item to go, and it's an important one. We would like to recognize Karen Huan. Karen, please come up to the dais. Mr. City Clerk, are there anyone who wants to speak or say public comments on this item?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, then I am going to read a resolution. Karen, this is Resolution Number C52025, commending Finance Director Karen Huan for her years of service. Whereas the City of San Mateo and the San Mateo City Council desires to commemorate and honor the career and accomplishment of its Finance Director Karen Huan. And whereas Karen has dedicated more than 18 years to the field of finance, including 11 years serving in leadership roles with local cities. And whereas Karen first served the City of San Mateo in 2015 as Acting Accounting Manager, Senior Accountant, and later returned as the Deputy Finance Director from January 22nd to November 2023. Whereas prior to her service as Finance Director, Karen also served as the Deputy Finance Director in the City of Burlingame, the Finance Manager in the Town of Los Altos Hills, and the Financial Services Supervisor in the City of San Bruno. And whereas Karen was appointed to serve as San Mateo's Finance Director in November 2023, joined the city's executive team and leading the department responsible for managing San Mateo's $239 million annual operating budget and $284 million five-year capital improvement program. And whereas during her tenure, Karen Huan provided steady leadership as the organization's Chief Stewart of Public Finances, ensuring the preservation of San Mateo's AAA credit rating and overseeing sound fiscal practices that safeguard the city's long-term stability. And whereas her many accomplishments as the Finance Director, including include developing the city's financial stability plan, establishing a new reserve policy, helping lead the enterprise resource planning transition, supporting negotiations with 11 bargaining groups, reducing departmental vacancy rates from more than 20% to full staffing, and guiding the successful adoption of annual budgets. And whereas Karen Huan also oversaw the city's low-interest federal loans for the Clean Water Program and ensured transparent and high-quality financial services across all city departments. And whereas Karen Huan has been widely respected as a collaborative leader, mentor, and strategic partner, committed to ensuring the City of San Mateo remains in strong financial position to provide high-quality services to the community. And whereas after more than four combined years of dedicated service to the City of San Mateo, including the past two directors, past two years as the Finance Director, Karen will be concluding her service to the City of San Mateo effective August 29th, 2025, to spend more time with her family and pursue her passion for gardening, beginning a well-deserved new chapter of her life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Mateo hereby unanimously expresses on behalf of the San Mateo community its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Finance Director Karen Huan for her dedicated and distinguished public service.
I would like to make a quick remark. Thank you, Council. This is incredible honor being recognized by the City Council. I want to thank Council for your trust, your patience with me for all my long presentations. I often bring challenging issues in front of you. And I want to thank Council for your leadership to always focus on the city's financial health and keep an eye on the long term. Thank you for your support over the years. I also want to thank our City Manager Alex Kojukian and your incredible leadership and your trust over the years. Now I have tears in my eyes. I will always remember the long conversation we have with the limited resources, how we can do better and how we can continue to make progress for the city. And thank you for the incredible executive team here. Many of you are here today. It's an incredible honor to work along with all of you. And my finance team, some of you are here tonight. Make a special trip here. I really want to thank all of you. Those are the difficult, long-hour work they have up day in and day out. Without them, I would not be here. Also, watching from home is my family. They put up a lot for me. Without them, I cannot do the job I love. So I want to thank them as well. Thank you for this honor. I wish I could continue to contribute to San Mateo in the future as volunteer or for special project, anything I can do to support the city. Thank you.
Karen, don't go in. We're going to take a picture. Yeah, we're going to have a few people say a few things. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope I didn't get out of order too much, but I just wanted to make sure before I missed an opportunity, Karen, to thank you very much for your service to the city over many years. But particularly for joining the department heads during a time of transition here. A number of us, you know, really everybody, you know, on the council side of the dais have only been here for a few years. And yet we've seen a lot of change in our leadership, not just us, but on the staff side as well. And that can be tough, and it was tough at times. But you helped make it better. And, you know, I know that you, you could have declined to join in that manner and nobody would have, everybody would have understood. And yet for you to take a stand and be a part of next steps for this new leadership was important. And it helped bring stability. I really appreciated your poise and articulate manner in which you shared our city's finances. I appreciated your expertise and your presentation, and we are better for your service. So just wanted to thank you for being here with us and wishing you all the best ahead.
Karen, thank you for everything. We're going to miss you. You're always welcome back. Don't forget that. But we wish you all the best in this next chapter of your life. And also, I recognized as I was reading this that we also owe you a gratitude for all you've done for the San Mateo, San Mateo Foster City JPA for the fire department. So thank you for all you've done for San Mateo Consolidated as well as the City of San Mateo. And we're going to come up and take a picture and thank you again. We're now moving beyond the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting. Got a very new record for me, which includes the business items being considered by the council. For that reason, I would like to remind all in the room and online that we will be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting as this tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is give respect, get respect, and we appreciate your cooperation with this. City Clerk, can you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number five, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number six, Amendment to Contribution Limits for City Candidate Campaigns, Ordinance Adoption. Item number seven, City Council and Boards and Commission Rules and Procedures Update. Item number eight, Marina Lagoon Spot Dredging Project Bid Rejection. Item number nine, Gateway Park Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Project Agreement. Item number 10, On-Call Public Works Plan Review Services Amendment. Item number 11, Los Prados, Quixote, Kelly, and Arroyo Lift Station Rehabilitation Project Agreement. Item number 12, Central Recreation Center Roof Improvements Project Contract Award. Item number 13, Construction Special Inspection Services for the Clean Water Program Amendment. Item number 14, Contracts with Contingency Component Update. Item number 15, Wastewater Treatment Plant Annual Major Components Contingency Reserve Increase. Item number 16, Recreation Services Agreement Contingency Reserve Increase. Item number 17, Customer Relationship Management Software and Services Agreement. And finally, item number 18, Housing Set Aside Fund Appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Mayor Newsom, I have no hands raised in Zoom and no request to speak in chambers.
Very good. Is there a motion from council to approve the consent?
I have a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Sverko Guditsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mayor, before we continue?
Yes, of course. Please.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to make a comment for the public on two items. Number one, the Los Prados, Quixote, Kelly, Arroyo Lift Stations Rehabilitation Project. This is a nearly $15 million investment in our city infrastructure to ensure that our lift stations and sewer conveyance systems are capable and modern. Arroyo is in my district, but it affects District 4 as well. And this is critical to our infrastructure and preventing future storms and floods like we had a few years ago. So just as now Assemblymember Papin, then Councilmember Papin said when she was running for election, she wanted to make sewers sexy. This is the way you do it. So this is really an important investment in our infrastructure that we all need to be very excited about. And then personally, I'm excited about item number 17, the CRM system. This is one of my first priorities since I joined council. And the whole idea was to help residents be able to see when they call or they email, or they come to us with a request, and it goes into the system, that it doesn't become a black box, but they are able to see where your request is and where it needs to go. So that's a huge advance in transparency. And it's also really helpful for staff, because they won't have to keep answering the same question over and over and over again. And they will all become a lot more efficient. And I want to thank staff, because this was a staff-wide initiative. And they learn from what happened in other cities and other areas. And I'm just really excited about what's going to happen at the end of it. So two good pieces of investment news.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think Councilmember Fernandez would also like to make some comments.
I'd also just like to briefly thank the city for their leadership on the Gateway Park Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Project. Gateway Park is in District 2. I would say one of the lesser-known recreation sites in District 2. And I'm just really excited to see the pedestrian bridge replacement on its way. So proud to support it, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address, sorry, may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if the council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. In chambers, I've received a total of seven requests to speak. I will allow folks in our virtual environment to please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on general public comment, items not on the agenda. We will be enforcing our rule of calling the last speaker, after which point we will not be receiving any additional requests to speak. So Mayor Newsom, that's a total of seven requests to speak. And when I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, we will take our speakers. And that per council adopted rules and procedures, we will have three minutes per speaker. Our first three speakers will be James Minto, followed by Scott Beagle and Rich Hedges.
Through the mayor, just so the public's aware, if you're talking about, if you're coming to speak on train horn noise, that's item 19, so that wouldn't be part of general public comment. That would come after in the agenda.
Thank you for clarifying.
James Minto still in the room? Yes, come right ahead.
For starters, I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to address the City Council on this very impressive, amazingly impressive evening. It makes me very proud to be a San Mateo resident. A quick note, I've been a resident for 72 years of San Mateo. My great-grandfather left San Francisco with seven daughters to raise them in San Mateo, because it is a safe city. There is no way that he could have done that in San Francisco. But in San Mateo, he did. And he's actually in the history book of building one of the first houses in San Mateo, which still stands today on Second Lawrence. So San Mateo is an amazing place, and tonight it really exemplifies that. The reason I'm calling, it's a safety issue. I live on Portola Drive in San Mateo, and there's a creek, the Bearsford Creek, comes down from Bearsford School, crosses Alameda, and it comes into my backyard, into the creek. I've lived there for 35 years, and for the last 35 years, I've been actually dredging it myself in order to keep the water moving due to mosquitoes and other potential problems. Again, the city of San Mateo, great people, mosquito abatement comes out. Everything is in order. We've kept it clean. The problem is, it's getting wider and wider, and I can no longer continue to dredge it. So I've contacted Mr. Ben Zabarini, I believe you pronounce his name. Ben is a real gentleman. He came out. He actually came out with a maintenance crew. He set up the appointment. They all agreed, oh my gosh, this is a problem. I said, well, primarily, there's a lot of young children who live in our neighborhood, and they explore like all kids do. They come up the creek. And what I'm concerned is, now it's actually seven feet deep. It's gone from two to seven feet deep. We're gonna have an accident on our hands. So we actually thought the best way to address this was to bring in some type of large rock to actually fill in the gap so that the water could move correctly down. Your city people thought that was the right way. But at this point, everybody's hands is tied, and then they said, we can't do anything about it. And I said, okay, so I understand that. Everybody has issues. But at least I'll come to the City Council, and I'll address it and ask for your direction as to, do you have any advice? What do you think I should do going forward? And it's primarily out of safety that I'm here this evening. But I do want to thank you, and it's phenomenally impressive evening. I'm so glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. Before I call?
No questions.
Your time is up. Thank you. Before I call the next three speakers, I would like to share, as was mentioned, we will not be accepting any additional requests to speak for general public comment. And our final speaker for general public comment will be Julie Lind. Our next three speakers will be Scott Beal, followed by Rich Hedges and Ernestine Jackson.
Mayor, real quick before the next public comment. Staff will go ahead and we'll follow up with the previous speaker. Matt Fabry in the back, our Public Works Director, if you can connect with them, that'd be great. Thank you.
I was gonna ask after, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, before I start, I just want to thank Councilmember Nash for giving me, a representative of the Plumbers Union, the opportunity to bring sexy back with sewage publicist stations. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Newsom, council members, and city staff. My name is Scott Beal, and I'm proud to represent the hard-working union construction professionals who build and maintain the infrastructure that keeps San Mateo safe, sustainable, and thriving. Many of our members are lifelong residents of this city and county. We live here, raise our families here, and take great pride in the quality of work we bring to every public project we build. Union apprenticeship programs create debt-free, good-paying career paths while supplying contractors with skilled, safe, and reliable workforce by labor-management partnerships, not by city budgets. For more than 100 years, unions like ours have been formally educating apprentices at no cost to them other than their time and effort. Americans often say how valuable it would be if college were affordable and debt-free. Well, our apprenticeship programs have been delivering exactly that. World-class training, rigorous classroom instruction, and hands-on learning that leads to middle-class careers, all without burdening our youth with tens of thousands of dollars of debt. And it's important to remember, the cost of something does not determine its value. Apprenticeships don't just build careers, they build communities. They keep young people on productive paths, create opportunities for veterans, women, and workers of color, and guarantee San Mateo has a skilled workforce ready for the future. And when our members are working, they have strong medical benefits, which means they and their families are covered, and the burden doesn't fall on our cities to provide care for them. But these opportunities can only be realized when there are jobs to send these highly skilled and trained workers. We can only bring in apprentices in the proportion to our secured workload. And that is why project labor agreements, community workforce agreements are so important. They are agreements that codify commitment to our communities and to the future workforce. On behalf of San Mateo County Building Trades, I respectfully encourage this council to place a project labor agreement discussion on your next agenda. By doing so, you will send a clear message. San Mateo is committed to building with quality, safety, opportunity, and fairness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Rich Hedges, followed by Ernestine Jackson and Trina Pierce.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to speak to you tonight. I want to tell you that I joined my first union in 1958 at the age of 15. My union involvement has given me the kind of living conditions I have today. And very few people I grew up with who did not make it into a union can say that. So tonight, you're gonna have a chance later in the meeting to possibly discuss putting a PLA on the next or future agenda for your discussion and decision of whether to go forward or not. So tonight's a crucial night to get it on the agenda. But respectfully, I would ask you to do that. Why does a PLA matter? Will it delivers cost certainty, prevents delays, and ensures projects be built to last, quality projects? It guarantees highly-trained workforce. It reduces accidents. It's very important, because I was hurt on a job that changed my career. So to have those kinds of guarantees of safety are very important. And you can only do that through union people who are trained on the job. A PLA locks in opportunities, ensuring city projects invest only in buildings, but in people. It ensures public safety. Skilled union construction workers bring specialized training. They also, these projects bring labor peace. There's nobody that's, none of these crafts will walk off the job or get into a dispute, which is slow down the work if you have a PLA. That's restricted in PLAs. And I've seen it happen on the airport at one point, where a craft walked off the job, and the building trades manager got them back on immediately, so there was no delays. It creates one set of rules that all contractors, union, and non-union guarantee labor peace and preventing costly disputes. It strengthens the local community. Our people live here. They're not brought in to sleep on streets in their campers like we see so often. They live here. They send their kids to school here. And by the way, they have kids, a lot of kids. Look at the Shoreview area, if you want to see an example. So these wages go back into the city. They help the schools. They pay taxes here. Non-union contractors' costs are more if they follow the rules. I'm gonna explain to you why that is. A non-union contractor has to pay their health insurance and their pension benefits in the paychecks, which they pay taxes on. Those go into tax-free accounts with the unions. So it's much more costly if they're not following the rules, which most of them don't. I'm calling them out tonight. They cheat. They pay people half-time when they're working full-time. So if you want to stop that, if you want to keep law-abiding contractors on the job, have a PLA.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Ernestine Jackson, followed by Trina Pierce and Richard Holliver.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ernestine. I've been here since 1969. I am a homeowner. Also was a volunteer at Mills Hospital for eight years. I'm here to represent the seniors in North Central. We were very happy and felt like council members were listening to us. I'm here this evening to ask you to please, please, install the 100 parking spaces back on Humboldt Street. Again, that's Humboldt Street here in San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Trina Pierce. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Trina Pierce, followed by Richard Holliver. And our final speaker will be Julie Lind.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and Councilmembers. First of all, before I go into my speech, which you already know what it is, I was just really happy to hear the lady that was sitting here and talked about the veterans and how one letter from her brother started so much love and caring about people. We need to really care about our veterans. I've had veterans in my family. My son-in-law was a veteran. So it was just nice to hear that. And I ran into Danielle, and she told me about her and Martin being down there. And it was just an honor to be there and what happened. So, but now, okay, back to North Central. Okay, I'm here. I told these seniors, I'm not going anywhere. They all think I'm gonna stop, but I'm not gonna stop. We were promised 100 spaces back, which I thought we should get 200. But I'll settle for 100. Can you guys please think about what these seniors are doing? They want those spaces. They were happy to have that. Now, I don't know what's gonna happen when you put it down this end to Humboldt and this end, don't get it, but that's their fight. Okay, I did what I needed to do, but I'm not going anywhere. And they go, you might move. I'm not moving. I've been in my house for so long. Since I was five, I've been in San Mateo. I'm not going anywhere. And my house is the way I want it. I've got my friends. So I'm gonna stay here and fight till we see some parking back, and those people are able to park, okay? So thank you guys very much, and please consider. You know, I could have a whole bunch of seniors here. There was five of them were supposed to be here tonight, but they get scared. And we do have a lot of people in our neighborhood that are scared to come out. Let's just face it. We don't live like that. We're not in that position. So we don't know what it feels like. We can guess. But just please consider them, so they don't all have to come down here and walk and take their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Richard Holliver, followed by our final speaker, Julie Lind.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Richard Holliver. I live in San Mateo. And I am an elected member of the San Mateo County Community College Board, representing the city of San Mateo, Belmont, and Foster City. First, thank you very much for honoring our College of San Mateo softball team. Well-deserved recognition. I understand you may be considering a project labor agreement at an upcoming meeting. And I'm here really to talk about our experience at our Community College District. We unanimously adopted a project labor agreement in 2005 when we passed our first bond measure to improve our facilities. We've renewed it since twice with each subsequent bond that was approved by voters. We have constructed over $1 billion worth of facilities, either new or rehabilitation of facilities, under a project labor agreement. And we adopted it really as a statement of our values. You know, we serve over 20,000 students each year. We're about uplift. We're about giving people access to affordable, high-quality education so that people can enter and remain in our communities, earning middle-class, living wage kind of earnings at good, quality jobs. So we believe you reflect that, you reflect those values when it's time to spend our funds by honoring the wages and the benefits that the hard-working, skilled men and women of the construction trades have worked for many years, many decades, to create a decent standard of living for themselves so that they can live in the cities and in the communities that they build. I can tell you that initially, our staff was not extremely enthused, but the board- but the board, just like the city council, enacts policy. We make the policy. Staff is then assigned to make it work. And I can tell you, our staff became believers. You know, there are a lot of problems you encounter when you're building a billion dollars' worth of new facilities. Fortunately, labor was never one of those problems. It smoothed out problems that may have otherwise existed. For example, the Painters Union went on strike throughout the entire Bay Area during one of our projects that we were building. They worked while they were on strike everywhere else because, under the project labor agreement, work continued. And then they gained whatever the settlement was throughout the Bay Area. So it's worked well. I think it's a good way to honor the working people.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And our final speaker will be Julie Lind.
Short, got to lure this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Julie Lind. It's very nice to meet everyone. I am here on behalf of the 104 affiliates and over 90,000 members and their families represented by the San Mateo Labor Council, about 10,000 of which live in your city, to urge your consideration of entering into a citywide community workforce agreement with our local building trades. A CWA is one of the most effective tools to make sure city projects are built efficiently, safely, and in a way that strengthens our community. That's why the San Mateo Community College District, as you heard, is on their third bond measure that has been covered by a CWA. It's why SFO has had an agreement in place since 1996 to the tune of billions of dollars. San Mateo County has had one in place for years and is, in fact, looking to expand it to cover Public Works projects countywide. Unlike a pre-qualification process, CWAs are not a major cost add or a huge administrative lift. You already have the boilerplate language. Our respective attorneys spend a few meetings negotiating the terms, and then the agreed-upon document is included in your bid packet. Independent studies have consistently shown that CWAs do not raise construction costs. What they do is add value by preventing costly delays, eliminating labor disputes, building in labor law compliance enforcement procedures, and guaranteeing a steady, highly-trained workforce. For the city, the administrative responsibility is minimal, yet the return is significant. CWAs also guarantee fair wages and benefits, keeping working families in the middle class and preventing a race to the bottom. They require safety standards that reduce accidents and injuries on the job. And they can integrate local hire provisions so that the dollars we invest in public projects cycle back into our neighborhoods. CWAs create predictability for developers, opportunity for workers, and accountability for taxpayers. They're a value add that multiplies the benefit of every public dollar spent. San Mateo has the chance to lead by example. Let's not just build buildings, but futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Very good. We will close public comment. And we will now move on to our next item of business. Item number 19, Train Quiet Zone Project Status Update. Before we take up this item, my colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, would like to make a statement.
Yes, I must recuse myself from this item because I have real property interest that is closed to both railroad crossings.
Very well. We'll see you after. We'll now receive a staff presentation on the status of the Train Quiet Zone implementation efforts, and we will provide feedback. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, city council members. My name is Jimmy Voe. I am a engineering manager with Public Works. To my right is Mike Kato. He is an associate engineer in Traffic Division. In the audience, we have a few consultants. We have Dan Leary and Aneep Amal. They are consultants for the design aspects of the closures from Sandball. And we also have, excuse me, DeWalt Cataria. He is our traffic consultant from Kittles and Associates. We'll all be here to answer any questions at the end of the presentation, but I would love to provide an update to the Train Quiet Zone project since our last council direction in 2024. We, if we recall, we came back to council in 2024 and we provided an option to gain Train Quiet Zone in the city of San Mateo. That option include a closure of Villa Terrace and extensions of medians on East Bellevue Avenue. They are currently at 40 feet right now with non-raised concrete barriers, and they would be increased to 100 feet. From that meeting, we got a direction from council to look into alternative improvements on East Bellevue to follow up with public outreach, excuse me, public outreach with additional residents as well as coordinating, coordinating with public safety on potential impacts. We also provided additional traffic analysis to the corridor to bring back to the public. We will be talking about all these items within the presentation. I also urge council to look into a few items that we're going to be looking at as feedback for staff. This involves looking into supporting or potentially looking to permit closures at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue. The next two items relate to funding that we'll further decide or look into as we talk about project updates. This talks about requesting public funding or grant funding from Section 130, which is a state-funded initiative for safety improvements at rail crossings, as well as the third option, which is, in the event that we can't secure funding, would council be open to using local funding to support the improvements? Here's a list of the agenda today. It's quite filled, but I will be diving into some of the items that were important for city council as a priority, as well as the general plan. We'll talk about the background for the audience members and new council members to understand how we got here, as well as looking to Train Quiet Zone options that were previously proposed, as well as being proposed right now. Then we'll dive into details for the individual council direction items. We'll talk about budget of funding and then open up to implementation, funding opportunities, and then review the schedule. At that time, we'll be talking about council feedback and questions and answers for the audience, as well as council members. So Train Quiet Zone, and I'll have another slide to talk about what exactly it means, was a city council priority since 2017. We have been making improvements kind of along this corridor. We have fourth and fifth improvements that were completed this year that still need to be certified under CPUC guidelines. From a general plan, San for in the 2040 Plan, these were options or items that were important as reducing and mitigating noise under Chapter 9. This involved projects needed to implement, achieve the Train Quiet Zone, and then further discussions with Caltrain to promote and encourage noise mitigations. These items have been ongoing with staff, and these things have been working. We've been working with Caltrain for as long as we can remember for the Train Quiet Zone efforts. Furthermore, we talk about how long this has been a process in the city of San Mateo. These are the meetings that we've had with council dating back from 2009 with our most recent meeting on August 4th to residents and community members at a public meeting, along with the meeting today at the city council presentation. So what we're talking about in terms of the rail corridor in the city of San Mateo and why we're implementing a Train Quiet Zone. San Mateo has the most crossings in the rail corridor between San Francisco and San Jose. We have been making major progress in these areas, along with all the great separation projects that are highlighted in green here. Those have been completed in recent years as part of the improvements along these corridors. What we are looking at now are the improvements necessary in yellow. Like I mentioned before, we have made improvements of fourth and fifth. And the purpose of this meeting is to talk about improvements or potential improvements at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue. So Train Quiet Zone. Train Quiet Zone is a program to reduce train horn noise throughout the corridor, upgrade rail crossings, and increase railway safety. It is a, we are planning to implement it between Villa Terrace and Hayward Park Station. Rail crossings below Hayward Park stations are already grade separated. So once this Train Quiet Zone gets implemented, it actually covers the city. It's essentially covering citywide. And how we do this, we make improvements throughout the corridor. This involves things such as quad gates, things such as median extensions, like I mentioned earlier, as well as closure options. And this is an important point that I want to make to community members. This is a Train Quiet Zone. I know that's a branding by FRA, but it's actually meant as a reduction in noise. It is not an elimination of noise. So horns will still sound in the areas usually when they're entering construction zone, approaching station, or if there are any other safety hazards that are in the area. Another note is upgrade crossings. So if you look in throughout the corridor in San Mateo, you'll have areas where the gate arms and bells and whistles, and the bells will still sound as they cross. That option does not sound in a closure option. So in Villa Terrace and Bellevue, if there were closure options presented, you would not have any noise related to gate arms as well as bells and whistles. Again, to limitations, the reason why we can't do it is because the FRA, that's the Federal Railroad Administration, doesn't restrict how Caltrains or rail operators operate along this corridor at stations. That's something that we are actively working with Caltrain outside the Train Quiet Zone efforts. This has been ongoing, and things that we are going to improve in these areas are going to be committed and coordinated with staff and presented to council at a later date. Speaking in particular to Hayward Park, staff understands this has been a location of contention or of interest in the community. Hayward Park is unique in sense that those gate arms are limiting pedestrian access, are operating on a whistle mic system. A whistle mic system means that the horns activate those gate arms to drop down. So in those locations where you have that horn blasting off a little bit more frequently, it's a purpose is to drop the gate arms down in order to restrict pedestrian movements. Now, this again is something that we're working outside of the Train Quiet Zone with Caltrain. They are looking into different technologies. At this time, we don't have an update on timing and schedule, but we will provide it once we find out. Speaking further to how we get a Train Quiet Zone implemented, FRA has guidelines on how to reduce risks in the corridor. Usually, we want to get under 100%, and that's to be able to provide the various different types of improvements that are related to closure as well as medianed. The city, in terms of where we need to be at, and what was recommended in July 2024, was to aim for 90% and below. And the reason for this was to provide a buffer in case the Train Quiet Zone index or the risk index shifts or fluctuates through from year to year. And that's based on traffic patterns, rail accidents, or rail volume, as well as collisions, based on a five-year recycle period. Speaking further, these were the options, or this is a proposed option that was presented to council in July of '24. On the left side, we have Villa Terrace in a closure scenario. That is going to be a cul-de-sac with a fence pulled up in the Caltrain right away. On the right side is East Bellevue showing median improvements extending 100 feet along the corridor. Both these have impacts. As you can see, the first one relating to Villa Terrace, once that's closed, we won't be able to shift or remove traffic, either bicycles, pedestrians, or vehicles through that corridor. That has to be shifted along East Bellevue, East Poplar, as well as Peninsula Avenue. We believe that there is a gain of one parking spot in a closure scenario. And then for East Bellevue, when we do median extensions, there are going to be limited access on turn movements coming in and out of driveways along that area, as well as removal of parking. What I noted here was four parking spaces in that space on our city standards, but staff is completely aware that may not be the condition in the field, which means people will park more spots or more cars within a smaller spot. So it could be upwards of 78 parking spots that are non-standard in the area that would be removed if we go with a median approach. Option B, looked into double closures, similar to what we have in Villa Terrace, but would be applied to East Bellevue. In that scenario, you would have the same type of situations with vehicle access, except now they would be shifted over to East Poplar as well as Peninsula Avenue. And council, this is pretty much the background to kind of get everyone up to speed. All the next few slides are going to talk about the recap. And that first item relates to coordination with public safety. It's a very brief slide. We talked to police and fire. We coordinated with them on several meetings to see if there are any issues with response times and access routes. They indicated, no, that was not going to be the case. And we got their blessing to move forward with the options, were both options A and option B. That was based on some traffic information that was presented to them, and that's our next slide, talking about the traffic impact study. In 2023, we completed a traffic impact study to present to council in '24. And then during this year, we did a supplemental study to reconfirm some of the data and reconfirm the findings and update with current data for the corridor, looked into traffic common measures along Claremont Street, and also pulled in feedback from community members. How we determined this was we took traffic counts in the area. We conducted a level of service analysis to see what that findings were. And then we implemented the changes, which would have been the closures, either one or two on those streets, took another analysis, reviewed the counts, and understand where the traffic is going to reroute to. Then we compared the existing with the new LLS to see what determination or the findings were. Based on the 2002 study and the 2005 study, we did not see an unacceptable change based on our city's adopted criteria for a level of service along intersections within this region. We know inherently cars will be shifted along Poplar and Peninsula. We understand there will be increased traffics in some area, but there could be decreases in traffic in some areas. But the overall thought here is that there shouldn't be as much of a change or to increase congestion or change the level of service as mandated by the city of San Mateo. So staff, this, the staff took some of these findings and routed and see what would happen if we remove those quarters. This is non-peak hours. This is just estimates that staff put together in terms of going from one direction to the other with these closure in place. These are on average between two to three minutes based on the vehicles or biking or walking within the area from one side to the other. I also mentioned that staff looked into traffic calling measures along Claremont. That was a recommendation by feedback from the community. From that feedback, we determined that always stops and crosswalks with improvements at Claremont State Streets would be needed or implemented, along with enhancing stop bars at Claremont and Bellevue Avenue. The other traffic common measures related to speed humps and speed cushions weren't recommended or warranted based on our city criteria. We took this information. We brought it to public outreach. This is an update from the public outreach that we did previously. We sent postcards to a wider audience. We went up to 5,000 previously from 3,000. The orange line there from Highland Avenue to Claremont, we handed door-to-door and hung door hangers at each one of those homes, including all the apartments in those locations. And we spoke to 77 different individuals in that area. And then we provided A frames along the rail crossings to notify residents of the upcoming meeting, as well as the public meeting on August 4th. On that survey, or excuse me, on that information, our postcard, was a survey that residents could respond to citywide. That would provide information on the likelihood of the options recommended for improvement. And then again, we reached out to local stakeholders and schools and social media postings. But speaking to the survey, we totaled 250 residents. That was open from the 9th of July to August 12th. What we did here was split also a locality question, which is how many residents are going to be on Villa Terrace? And how many residents are going to be on East Bellevue? And among the residents, among all the options and correspondence here, we noticed that option B was still the preferred choice among these three tested options, which was option A, Villa Terrace would be a closure, or and a median Bellevue. Option B was double closure. And then the third option here was going to be none of the, no Train Quiet Zone establishment. The results indicated that option B was the first choice, followed by none of the above, followed by option A. We also had a city public presentation on August 4th. Forty-two intendents, 27 were in person, and then we had 15 attend online. And generally, the comments were related to this, which was, I believe there was a comment talking about why the Quiet Zone, why is it named the Quiet Zone? And why isn't safety the focus? And we explained that there is a need for both, right? Which is safety as well as a Quiet Zone implementation for city council. A lot of the residents didn't have or wanted to do a pilot program to close off the corridors and monitor traffic in that area. Staff looked into this and indicated that there would be monetary funding that we would have to front to study this area. And also, it would delay the Train Quiet Zone implementation. Therefore, it was not recommended to council to undergo the temporary analysis. There are thorough comments from the community members that said that noise as a whole has reduced, as well as seeing just general traffic conditions. as well as seeing just general traffic conditions not being forced through the area. The feedback from the preferred options, some supported the double closures option B. Many supported quad gates, which is an option that we previously presented on. And then many did not support both A or B. Furthermore, these are concerns kind of related to the individual quarters. This year related to traffic mostly, that was a big concern was increased traffic in this quarter. Once we closed, made closures, there were concerns for medians related to access and parking. Those were things that we previously looked into as well, along with pedestrians, safeties along Peninsula and East Poplar. Once we started routing with the closures that they were to be implemented. And counsel, that's the recap portion. And I have a few more slides to talk about the update on budget. And then after that, we can start bringing that open up to questions with the audience. So one of the big updates, so like I mentioned earlier, was the changes in the risk index. These are two sets of numbers from July 4th or July 2024 to August 2025. What we have seen is a across-the-board increase between eight and 10% among the options that are being presented. And this is mainly focused in or because of the increased train volume that you're seeing from Caltrain. So Caltrain electrify the trains, you're seeing this as a result of the increased traffic in this area. I need to bring up the point that we made earlier about keeping the risk index at under 90%. And that's still something that staff is recommending to council to give us the buffer needed in case there is moderate variations in the risk index from year to year as well as future proofing or giving us a little more time to implement the train quiet zone. I will say this, council members, there is a very, there is a likelihood that we do lose or we could lose the train quiet zone in the future. But this option or going with option of 90 or under 90% gives us more time to figure out what our next steps may be. And those next steps may be additional improvements in the other railroad corridors on First, Second, Third and Ninth Avenue. With that being said, we count staff is not making a recommendation to go with A and C just based on the risk index here. We are focusing our index or their improvements on option B, which is a double closure at these two locations. For budget increases, this is a big change from what we presented in July of 2024. What you'll see here is changes related to closures going from a $400,000 amount to upwards of 1.7 or 1.8 million, depending on the location. This is due to one big thing, which is the improvements that Caltrain is requesting us to do as part of the train quiet zone or safety crossing improvements. We knew previously that there was going to be some improvement involved, but we did not understand. We greatly underestimated how much it was going to be required in their right of way. So Caltrain is requesting the city to do work in their right of way, which is concrete asphalt removal. And the Caltrain has to go in there and do improvements in their own right way, changing the signal housing, making a removal of the gate arms, things of that nature. So what we were originally seeing as 800,000 for double closure, it's now upwards of 3.0, nearly 3.6 million. And that doesn't include the south cost, which would be the staff time, the construction management time and the design cost, which puts its budgets closer to 4 million. Our staff budget is right there for 1.2 and that's our expected gap funding that are gap needed for the area. But we do have some opportunities, opportunities coming from grants, opportunities coming from the state. The state has a program through Section 130, that's what CPC as well as Caltrans that implements or funds implementation of safety improvements along rail crossings. They are willing to fund Villa Terrace construction costs in its full amount for both the city and Caltrain. That amounts to about 1.8 million. And then the remaining amount that still needs to be looked into is about a million or about 2.2 million, of which we have an existing budget of 1.2. So the funding gap in this scenario where we receive Section 130 funding is about $1 million. But Section 130 does come with some constraints and I want to elaborate on that and provide some creative options that staff have came up with to delivering the project. I'll just jump quickly to the last point here. In order for us to enter an agreement with Section 130 with Caltrans and CPC, we all have to agree on the implementation schedule, which means that's the city as well as Caltrain. Caltrain's schedule is looking anywhere between 18 and 30 months. And that could delay the train quiet zone established by over a year. Now, traditionally, when you make these improvements, you do them in quick succession, which is the city does a work. And then a few weeks or months later, Caltrain does that, comes in and does a work so that impacts are reduced. What we are proposing is to do something called a phase approach, which is everything in blue is a city right of way, which is to make the improvements in this area and then qualify for a train quiet zone. So once the improvements are done in the city right of way, we can qualify for a train quiet zone. Afterwards, we would secure funding in whatever means we can and complete the improvements in phase two for everything in Caltrain right of way. Now, this doesn't have to happen in quick succession. This can happen at a later time, once we figure out where that funding string is going to be. So now our budget looks like this. We have our local funding at 1.23 million. We'll use that local funding to phase their approach and do the improvements in our right of way. This secures our train quiet zone. Once we work with FRA and the other stakeholders, Section 130 comes at a later time to fund the remaining costs for Villa Terrace and Caltrain's right of way. That's going to be 1.3, which is the remaining cost. And then the cost that we need to cover is about 1.47 million for the closure in East Bellevue. And we have opportunities again. So once we can determine a path forward, we can look into improvements in this corridor. These are the funding opportunities. We can use Section 130 again through Caltrans and CPC, but we're going to have to be nominated to also work with them to see what their budget looks like in the upcoming fiscal year for October or November. The SMTCA is listed here as well for as part of the great separation program. They are looking at alternative methods to implement safety improvements. Closure, it happens to be something that they are looking into that we're going to be coordinating with them as well. And then the last two items are just things that staff can do right now, which is coordinate with Caltrans, look into what we can do to reduce the costs. With the last item, the last item being local funding to support any changes or any additional funding that we need for the closing. This is the schedule that we presented to the community in terms of the implementation of the train quiet zone. It's a few more months in the backend. It might squeeze into the first or second month of 2027 as we do some coordination efforts with FRA. But essentially, if we go with a phase approach, there's a chance, there's a high probability that we will be able to deliver within the timeframe presented. And counsel, this is my last slide related to our summary of options. Risk here relates to risk index are also related to the risk of losing a train quiet zone. Based on the options that I mentioned before, for the index Cs, option A and C are not as favorable as option B, given that they're over 90%. Schedule wise and budget wise are the same for both the, these three options, meaning that we have enough available local funding to implement the improvements within the required timeframe. For quad gates, we would need more funding and we would need additional budget to complete those improvements. In terms of neighborhood acceptance, you'll see community members in here today. They represent members in the east or residents along Villa Terrace as well as East Bellevue. Their preferred choice has still been quad gates. And then some are supporting double closures and then there are very few supporting a closure median. And the last comment I do want to make here, because we've been talking about train quiet zone most of the presentation, there are safety improvements that are going to happen these corridors, once we make improvements. Double closures, the essence of removing that kind of conflict is a very big item. Whereas you know, often C and A and C still have safety improvements that are going to be made as part of these improvements. And with that, counsel, I will yield to any questions.
Thank you, Jimmy, for the presentation. Before we go to your questions, we are going to open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, how many requests do we have for public comment on this item?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom, I have a total of 10 requests to speak in chambers. If you are in chambers and wish to speak on this item and haven't provided me with a request to speak slip, please do so now. As was mentioned earlier, we will be enforcing our rule, after which we call the last speaker. Well, we will not be taking any additional requests to speak, so please submit your request to speak now if you haven't already done so. In our virtual environment, we have three speakers, so per council adopted rules and procedures, that will be two minutes per speaker. And our final speaker, seeing no additional requests, final speaker in chambers will be Kathy Wangend. And our final speaker in our virtual environment will be Ms. Ann. So we will take our first three speakers. When I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that will help us make sure we receive all of your public comments. Our first three speakers will be Chris Minerva, followed by Sharon Windust and Bing Lee Luo.
Hi, Mayor, Council.
Hello, welcome.
I think we should take a second look at the quad gates. They solve all of our problems. Our street parking is irreplaceable. There are no alternatives. Installing a medium would be, would be prevent utility trailers, dumpsters, moving vans, et cetera, with no ingress or regress. It would isolate us. The aesthetics of a barrier is not conducive to a neighborhood. It would look more like a checkpoint crossing that you could still go around and through. Would also negatively impact our home prices. Backing out would not be an easy task. Even cars use more than half the street. Leaving Bellevue and Villa Terrace for last, lack of planning and funding for an important project leaves us with a double bind, the illusion of choice. Midlow Park installed their quads for 2 million. They hired an independent firm for their project. And they're not closing any streets and no barriers. They're not making their citizens beg for their freedom. They value and respect their citizens as themselves. Quads, anything besides quads, anything else is short sighted vision.
Thank you. Our next three, thank you. Our next three speakers will be Sharon Windust, followed by Bing Lee Luo and Kevin Zhao.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and City Council. I'm a San Mateo Heights resident. East Bellevue is my closest cross street. I'm here to voice my opinion on the tri quiet, excuse me, train quiet program that is really about safety. Safety does not seem to be a priority to our city leaders. We have bicyclists, e-bikes, scooters and those one-wheeled contraptions whizzing all over our roadways, often wearing no helmets and no consequences. Additionally, we have drivers who seem to think stop signs and following speed limits signs are optional. We have no police ticketing or enforcing traffic rules and laws. If you adopt either of the two options for the train quiet zone, they will cause enormous traffic congestion that your big data traffic studies didn't capture. You'd have to be out of your ever-loving mind to think that permanent closure of the crossings at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue won't have a negative effect on traffic on the surrounding streets. And extending the medians to 100 feet will cause insurmountable chaos for the residents who live adjacent to the medians. Please remember all the schools in the area. When school is in session, how are the cars and buses going to get to and from the schools and the freeways? What about the pedestrian traffic? Students attending San Mateo High and Park School, as my children did, walk on East Bellevue. And I know my son was, when he was a teenager, he would jump a barrier. I guarantee it. What about the family daycare in East Bellevue? How are those parents going to navigate drop off and pickup? The best option is to install quad gates. The second best option would be to install a temporary closure for six months and test the theory that the closure will have more drawbacks than benefits. Those who live in San Mateo Heights already know what the outcome will be. Please don't permanently close the two railroad crossings or extend the medians to 100 feet.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Bing Lee Luo, followed by Kevin Zhao and Pat Diskin. And just as a reminder, we do not allow for cheering, jeering or booing during public comment, if we could please refrain from that. Thank you.
Thank you, council members and city staff and city managers for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to advocate for the closing of the Villa Terrace and East Bellevue great crossings on the Caltrain. I'm here to advocate for the closing of Villa Terrace and East Bellevue great crossings at the Caltrain line based on two key points, so unique dangers and the positive impact on local traffic. First, among the more than 40 Caltrain great crossings between San Francisco and San Jose, these two stand out as exceptionally hazardous, I have to say. I travel, do field trips to almost all 42, I want to say 42 of them. Unlike nearly all others, there's absolutely nothing, no roadways, business or barriers separating residential lots directly from the train tracks. There might be one exception in Atherton, but it's low density and large lots make it far safer. Here, risks are acute, especially for children. I actually live in the same daycare home, which are, which is three lots away from the crossing next to the daycare. I interact with the kids daily. I've been, I've seen balls roll towards the tracks. Join curers' children into danger. They are mesmerized by the trains. Closing these crossings would slash cut through traffic with safety and curb noise pollution that threatens our hearing, which we only have one shot at protection. As someone who bikes and walks across them to work almost every day, I wouldn't mind the short detour at all. Second, the traffic impact would actually be a net positive, at least for East Bellevue. It will eliminate those risky left turns at East Bellevue and North Delaware, where visibility is poor and accidents are. Instead, drivers would reroute to East Poplar, which offers already protected left turns and a fully grid separated crossing. It's built to handle more traffic, so why not use it? Plus, the added parking options nearby would ease any minor inconveniences.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Kevin Zhao, followed by Sharon Sanchez and Peter Morgan.
Hello, council members. My name is Kevin and thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. I want to speak out against putting medians on Bellevue Avenue for three reasons. One is parking, number two is access, and number three is safety. So I have invested interest. I live right there on Bellevue Avenue and three of those eight parking spots are in front of my house. And so, and you know, parking there is more than a convenience. It's safety. And you know, I've got a wife and two daughters who work and they come home late because of their jobs. You know, it's nine o'clock, 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock and you know, my teenager, she likes to stay out. She'll come in at 2:00 in the morning, right? Now, if they've got to park, you know, so far away, that's dangerous for them at night. So, you know, I know that, you know, what can I do? Well, I can park in the street when I get home from work and let them park in the driveway, right? But that doesn't work for me because as I come home, you know, already I'm coming home and maybe I've got like a 70% chance of getting that parking spot in front of my house. And, but if I don't, then it's like, okay, well, I need to go park somewhere down the street. So my kids can park in the parking lot, but what happens? Well, I don't want to park in front of Brian's house because he's got two girls. I don't want to go down to the court and park in front of Sean's house, right? Because he's got girls too. So there really isn't a whole lot of options for me to park. So basically it affects a lot of people and not just me. What about the other eight spaces that are taking up? So that's going to be a huge impact. And I don't want to talk about access, but I just really feel like quad gates are the answer. Like, why are we putting the burden on these residents right here for our benefit of the train noise, which benefits the whole city? The whole city is going to get that benefit, but the burden is going to be put on this one neighborhood with a few houses. So by putting in the quad gates, we just spread that burden over more people for the whole city and it benefits the city.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Sharon Sanchez, followed by Peter Morgan and Angus Chandler.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and honored members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I also, I live on the corner of Villa Terrace and Wood Sideway. I've owned my home for 41 years and I've seen the neighborhoods change. Yes, both of the neighborhoods have horrible parking. Sometimes we have to park three blocks away. If you know that neighborhood, we've actually had to park by Celia's Mexican restaurant. Aside from that and noise, you live by a train, you're going to expect to hear horns and things. That's not my issue. Mine's more of a human interest issue. In the 41 years that I've lived there, that I know of, two that I've witnessed, there have been four suicides on the Villa Terrace tracks. And I don't know if everybody's aware of that. It's not an easy thing for a neighborhood to have to see and absorb. The last time it happened was last year. Kids were coming home from school. They were worried that it could have been one of their contemporaries. It was a really hard thing. You have parents having to explain to their children what is going on. I very much support the closure of Villa Terrace. As far as Bellevue, I really don't live right there. I don't know what they're dealing with. I don't know if they've had that happen. I don't know if they've had that happen in their neighborhood. But when you've had it happen, it really is quite profound for the neighborhood, and that's why I would like to see that closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Peter Morgan, followed by Angus Chandler and Lily Zhao.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council member, for your time and service. My name is Peter Morgan. I've lived on Villa Terrace, actually, both sides of the Caltrain tracks, and I have a young family. And so I want to advocate for the closure on Villa Terrace. I also recognize that the Bellevue folks may have a different perspective, and so I'm speaking really on behalf of Villa Terrace here. But I have a young family with two boys who are rambunctious and hopefully more on the way, and my fear is just truly a safety issue. They see the lights, they see the noise, and they're attracted to it like bugs to light. They like to be close to that crossing. They like to watch, and we have specifically trained them of how to cross that area. Of course, they're not old enough to do that without us, but at some stage, we'd like to have the confidence as a family to be able to let our kids roam the neighborhood like I did when I grew up, and we would feel a lot more comfortable on Villa Terrace having a closure there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Angus Chandler, followed by Lily Zhao, and our final speaker in chambers will be Kathy Wiegand.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing my comment today. My name is Angus Chandler. I'm a homeowner on Bellevue Avenue. I live about five houses away from the crossing. And I know there's a lot of different sides to this issue and a lot of different angles you can come at it. But at least for me, I would like to urge you to close the crossing at Bellevue Avenue. And I've come to this decision for two reasons. The first is safety. So it is an at-grade crossing. I have two children. A lot of children are in the neighborhood. There is a nursery right in the neighborhood. And I know that, you know, these other options, they may provide some increase in safety, but it just objectively, it seems like crossing this at-grade crossing in a neighborhood is just, seems like the safest option. The second reason is for the stated purpose of this, of this whole project, which has been going on since 2009, is to make this a quiet zone. And at least the numbers and the updated numbers that were shown today are that the other options, the quad gate and the long medians, will only put us very slightly into the area where, the zone where we can actually be a quiet area, quiet zone. And so if there's any incidents, if there's an accident, if there's change in traffic patterns, all this work, all this money, all this time, decades of work, could all be for naught, and we wouldn't even have a quiet zone. And so for those two reasons, I urge you to adopt option B, which is closing of the Bellevue and Villa Terrace crossings. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Lily Zhao, followed by Kathy Wiegand.
Good evening, council members. I just wanted to let you know that I'm also a homeowner on Bellevue Avenue, and I would say that having the option of medians is absolutely unacceptable, not just because it doesn't, it doesn't, it removes essential parking, but also because it actually increases danger. Almost daily, drivers hit that median, and they go and crane into side vehicles. It's happened to us on multiple occasions. We've had our mirrors taken off our cars. We've had our cars swiped. We've had three of our cars completely totaled by a drunk driver. And this median option would increase the risk of someone going around because of the 100-foot, you know, median, if you think about someone wanting to go around, they still could. So I think that would also just increase accidents. So in my opinion, Bellevue and Villa Terrace, for that matter, to have full closure would be an acceptable option to meet both the train quiet zone issue and to provide safety. I think that if we look at safety on Bellevue, to speak to the point of Villa Terrace seeing suicides on Bellevue, we have, unfortunately, have also witnessed the same. My son has directly witnessed an elderly man commit suicide right before him as he walked home from San Mateo High School. So, and just a couple weeks ago, maybe about a month ago now, another person committed suicide right around the corner of Bellevue Avenue. So for addressing safety, I would say closure for both Villa Terrace and Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Kathy Wiegand.
First, I want to say thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here to advocate not closing either of those. That will cost nothing. I have not heard any of the presentation, why we need a quiet zone. When you ask my neighbors, I live on North Clermont, about a quiet zone, they say they don't hear the train. We really don't hear the train. We're all used to it. Some people actually like the noise of, the sound of people going places. So I personally feel that the quiet zone is not needed at all. Closing those streets will force all the traffic onto Poplar and Peninsula. One thing they left out, that North Clermont at Peninsula is offset. So anybody going north from North Clermont must make that left turn onto Peninsula. It's offset, and the bus comes there. So the bus comes, it'll block, then people are trying to get out there. So they're saying that it'll be safer because of the train, for the train, but it's going to be more dangerous for the traffic going on, for people going places. Right now, a lot of people go onto Villa Terrace. They'll go to Villa Terrace, and they'll cross there and go on San Mateo Drive to go north. That was completely left out, that that's not going to be an option anymore for people. Traffic flow is the most important thing, in my opinion. In our very, very dense neighborhood, traffic and parking are a huge, huge problem in our neighborhood. So I'm just here to ask you to please keep those streets open. I own five properties in that immediate vicinity on North Clermont and Villa Terrace. We use that daily. Also, there are school buses that go pick up the kids at Samaritan House, and that will
Thank you.
Turn around there.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, where our first speaker will be Marie. Marie, please unmute your mic.
Yes, this is actually, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name's actually Felix Stoller. Marie's also here with us. I would like to say that we are actually impressed that the community outreach appears to have worked. We've attended the meetings, and the option B that wasn't even there at the beginning of this process has now been added and appears to be the most risk avoidance of all of the options. We own the property immediately adjacent to the tracks. There has been a daycare that has been operated out of the front unit, and the, we already have no parking. The street parking is already red, and the median is immediately across from there. People who are dropping off their children, we have a safety and liability issue with that currently, because there's no place for them to park or even wait to get their children safely inside. The extension of the median further back really creates access issues to the property and would exacerbate the ability for anybody to conduct any business on that street. We appreciate that we have been heard. We appreciate that the options are now on the table, and we look forward to a resolution that will help all of the residents in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mary Claire. Mary Claire, please unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Mary Claire, and I have lived on Villa Terrace for five years now with my family. And first of all, thank you for all the data. I think it was really encouraging to see that the majority of people in this neighborhood want the closure of both Villa Terrace and Bellevue. Again, with us living on Villa Terrace with small kids, it's a safety thing. As Sharon has said, we have witnessed multiple suicides. I just last month or two months ago, not only witnessed an attempted suicide, but also assisted in that. And I, you know, I'm a nurse, and I am trained for that exact thing, and I can't tell you how traumatizing it is to see and witness in person. So I think that's a huge part that we need to consider. And, you know, to be honest, listening to all the feedback with Bellevue and, you know, everyone who is kind of against this, I totally understand because we have a huge parking issue. And I think that as a city, the council can look at that issue separately and solve that issue for all of us, including the Bellevue people, so that, yes, we have a safe, quiet zone that is going to just increase our quality of life all around, but we also have increased parking. And so what I propose for that, for both Bellevue and Villa Terrace, is to look at different parking options. And again, I haven't researched this extensively at all, but I think that, you know, providing permit parking where, they have this in some neighborhoods that I've heard of, where people get a certain amount of permits for their house that they can park out on the street, and then anyone else has to move their car after two hours. Again, I'm loudly just hearing opposition say that their issue is parking, and I think that we can solve that and also do the closure at the same time. So anyways, thank you so much for the data and the time, and we hopefully are looking forward to you guys supporting the majority of what people want and closing at least Villa Terrace and both of them off. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Ms. Anne. Please unmute your mic.
Hello. Thank you so much for being here today and letting us speak. I live on State Street, which runs parallel to Villa Terrace, and I am in support for the closure of the Villa Terrace crossing, especially, I see cars racing down my street and other streets parallel to Villa Terrace in order to get to the crossing. And our neighborhood streets are not meant for speeding in cars. As a parent of two young children, this is a huge concern. So the closure of the crossing would actually keep many kids in our neighborhood much safer. And in addition, the gates, as they are right now, are actually unsafe for cars. The way the lights and the bells are timed with the gate, it's actually quite easy for a car to possibly get stuck on the tracks and, or just get stuck in between. And of course, you know, there's hopefully enough time for a car to like drive forward or go backwards. But it's truly terrifying, and I've actually been in that situation myself. So the closure for Villa Terrace, of the Villa Terrace crossing, which is what I can speak to mainly, would be safer for both kids, people walking, and also frankly, drivers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Well, thank you all for giving your public comment tonight, and I appreciate all of you sticking around. I know this has been a long meeting. We will now open it up to questions, comments, and directions from council. Does anyone? Councilmember Diaz Nash would like to go first. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much, through the mayor, and thank you to everybody who's here, who's on virtual, and to all the people who've gone to all of the community meetings since 2009. I mean, this is clearly a major issue from a citywide perspective, as well as from a specific neighborhood perspective. So first, a couple of questions for Jimmy and team. Or maybe the first one for the city manager. How aware are we of all the suicides that our residents here have been, have been reporting tonight on the tracks?
Can you repeat that again?
I said, how aware are we of all the reported suicides that we've just heard tonight from the residents on the tracks?
So up and down the rail corridor, there are a number of suicides that all the cities are dealing with. The most recent suicide that I'm aware of, and I'd looked to our police department, but I believe it was about a year, and I think the audience spoke about it, was it a year ago? A month ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that is something that is just most recent. So that's then two in the last year, from my understanding. One was at Villa Terrace, and it sounds like one on Bellevue, from what we're hearing here.
Yeah.
But there are suicides throughout the corridor that do take place on the railway line.
So that, that, the number that I heard tonight just blew me away, you know, in terms of what the community's been talking about. And I'm sure the police are very involved in trying to track it, but that, I think, that blows every other issue out of the water for me in terms of what's important. Number two, and maybe this is, Jimmy, for you, I'm sure it's part, you've been studying this issue for so long. What additional traffic calming or other kinds of options have we thought about, including permit parking, that could start to address, if we did these closures or whatever option, could address some of the residents' immediate concerns? And I heard speeding. I heard you're taking out, you may or may not be taking out parking. It's already jammed with traffic and a focus on Poplar and Peninsula.
I'm going to put my Bethany Lopez on for a moment. I'm not trying to make a chair, but I'll try my absolute best. Peninsula Avenue, I know this, that we are looking into a complete street approach over there to make improvements and safety improvements along that corridor. That's something that is being investigated and looked into now. The, if you notice, the improvements that we've done in maybe the last two or three years, at least on Poplar Avenue, I mean, turning some of those into green bike lanes along that corridor. There are other things that come that I am in charge of, which would be related to CD DG funding, as well as sidewalk improvements that could be implemented in those areas to reduce tripping hazards that would provide a better walking environment for pedestrians. But as far as the traffic areas and those items would be, the best approach would be to look into Delaware, or excuse me, the peninsula improvements as complete streets.
Okay. Well, that clearly should be something that we look at very actively, because no matter what, there's going to be more traffic than when you get more people. And so as many options as you can look at in terms of traffic calming, the better. And would you agree, or anybody, that one of the residents said that eliminating the left turn, left turns in that area would improve safety?
If you don't mind, I would defer this to Mike. That's okay? Appreciate it, Mike.
So I think that is going to depend on where you are. You know, when you close the crossings, it's going to change the traffic pattern. So you might have fewer left turns in some places or no left turns in some places, but you might have an increase in left turns at others. You know, you heard one resident comment about the Clermont and Peninsula intersection in particular, right? The left turns there. So I think it's, it's like a double edged sword question. It's hard to really say, you know, what the net end result of that would be.
Okay. And then whatever changes we decide to make or not make, is there part of the plan to really monitor traffic, particularly if there are changes going forward, so we can say, here's what we think was going to happen, here are the changes we made, and here's what happened to the traffic? I mean, just so we do have that impact analysis.
I'll, I'll defer to Catherine's map, but I think that's something that we can look into to review the traffic conditions in the corridor.
Yeah, I think that would be, for any, any change we make, I think it's important to understand what the actual impact is and how do we learn from it? So with those questions in mind, sort of going on to my thoughts, as long as I've been in San Mateo, I have heard about quiet zone and priorities. You know, certainly from a, this is a very difficult balancing act, because there are many neighbors in the area that want to hold on to their parking or want to minimize traffic changes. But then, on the other hand, even within the same neighborhood, the majority of people in the survey and the majority of speakers we heard here tonight said that safety outweighed those issues and that it was more important to close the gates. Close both at Villa Terrace, as well as East Bellevue. And that we saw in both the survey and the comments, very few people want the meridian changes. And so it really becomes, do you do nothing or do you close both? I think in terms of real options that are out there. Certainly, staff has been working on this for years, beyond, beyond years. I'm very impressed by the community outreach, citywide and locally, and the fact that you went back and did additional outreach, because when we heard from the community last time, there was no one wanted the meridian, so, or the median, excuse me, but had lots of questions. And I think you went out and really tried to do, do extensive research. But I think where I'm hearing is that there is consensus here tonight in the emails, as well as that matches with the survey, that most people in the vicinity are supportive of both closures. that most people in the vicinity are supportive of both closures. Certainly from a citywide perspective, there is no question that wanting a quiet zone to lessen the noise is the favorite overall. And I think it was important for you to to register the fact that this is not a total get rid of all the noise all the time. Because that would be selling a false bill of goods, but it would be a substantial reduction. Um, and there may be ways we can improve it in the future. And that, you know, from a safety and from a quality of life perspective, that citywide overall, as well as in the neighborhood, I am hearing a strong community support for closing both Villa and Bellevue. So that's where I am coming out on that I am in favor of the permanent closure of both Villa and East Bellevue. Uh, yes, I think we should secure uh Section 130 funding for Villa and additional 130 if we can for East Bellevue. I appreciate and support the creative suggestions you have about timing. Um, but right now, the costs are only going to go up. The funding opportunities are only going to go down. This has been a strong citywide strategic priority for over 10 years. Um, safety benefits, quality of life benefits. And if we can't find all the funding, then yes, I would be in favor of coming back and looking at additional local funding in order to complete this. Because if we do this, we need to do it completely and not do it halfway and then say, gee shucks, we've run out of money. That would not be fair to any of our community members. So I guess yes, yes, and yes is where I come out. Thank you.
Councilmembers, who are good.
Thank you. Um, thank you, guys, for the presentation. Um, can you explain um the FRA standard we are trying to meet and how actions in one part of the city might impact efforts across the city?
So, uh, councilmember, you're referring to how to implement a train quiet zone?
Correct.
Okay, so um what's happening out here, or at least a corridor that we represented, is we're using a very large range of different crossings throughout San Mateo, Villa Terrace, all the way down to Hayward Park. Because we are making improvements at the most dangerous or most high risk index locations, right? For example, at Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue, where we installed quad gates as part of the downtown quarter. The improvements that we make upstream over at Villa Terrace and at Bellevue um are gonna be able to be enough to reduce the entire risk index of that entire quarter. So we wouldn't have to make any other improvements in the location on the this base, on this recent estimate. But again, I have to caution that that we may need to make in the future to bring it down at other locations.
And then on slide 24, if you can pull that up.
Multiple years now in some cases and and staff for a lot of extra work on this as well. I think Councilmember Diaz Nash mentioned a number of, you know, the the idea that I feel like right now we're seeing in our risk index numbers and the increase in costs that we're estimating that the window of opportunity to complete this project is is closing on us within a feasible budget by this decade. To the point where I I agree that we face a decision tonight to finish the job or not, and I recommend that we do so. I note that community feedback, even on Villa Terrace and Bellevue Avenue, appears to at least prefer some action over none. And as staff presented, the only action that we could take tonight that that finishes the job within recommended risk management and acceptable budget and timing parameters is option B. So I just, you know, I appreciate those who have advocated for quad gates. To me, I think last year, I recall when we took a look at some other scenarios, there was one that included quad gates at all at eight at grade crossings and and that would have provided a comfortable risk index, but it it's a completely different project in that it would be 20 plus million dollars. It would take longer. And so I think when we're talking about quad gates tonight, we're looking at quad gates on two intersections or option B. And and so faced with that choice, I'm inclined to opt for option B. And I appreciate that this is an imperfect solution, but we we have already put forth some resources at other intersections to get where we are today. I do think despite being faced with imperfect choices, that there is a an a path forward that can allow us to achieve a quiet zone that will benefit many folks in San Mateo and still increase safety. I recommend this based on staff traffic analysis that found some impact to neighboring streets, and I do appreciate that there will be some impact, but not so much that would threaten level of service or quality of life. And extra work from staff finding funding opportunities that allow us to complete this despite significant increases in estimates. And as noted, the the priority for a quiet zone has has been in place for some time, and I I think it's fair to say it has increased significantly since last year's increase in Caltrain service. We've heard many more residents reporting negative impacts. So I appreciate the significant work that's been done to date to allow the city to do something about this while making our city safer at the same time. Thank you.
Well, I can count to three. So I what I'm hearing is that we we have consensus already. And so I'm inclined to weigh in the same way and proceed with the double closure. That said, I also heard from a lot of the neighbors about some of their concerns. And so I'd like to take a minute to ask a couple of questions to see if we can help address some of those. First being, when we look at the drawings, they look like cyclone fences. Is it possible, or could we at least study something that would be a little more substantial in the way of like a sound wall? So whether it be a cement or a stone wall, so that we could actually, in addition to having it be a safe quarter, help ensure that we would quiet that crossing. That's the first question. And again, I don't need an answer now, but I would like to make sure that as we move forward with this, we we look at this. I've also heard people say concerns about crossings for pedestrians and cyclists. And there's a slide, Jimmy, which you and I talked about, but I don't remember the slide number, but that shows all the crossings for the city. Could you bring that up, please? Thank you. Okay, so my district starts basically at at fourth and goes all the way down to the south part of the city. So my southern part of the city is already at grade crossings, but I do have ninth and fourth and fifth all in my district. And I I will have people note that there is a huge distance between ninth and 25th, and we are able to mitigate traffic. So I just want to make sure that as we do this, that we continue to look at ways to mitigate traffic, and we listen and are attentive to the concerns and address them. I'd also like us to look into, especially in the two, the four new cul-de-sacs we'll be creating, parking permits or some sort of parking solutions that can alleviate and help with those challenges. And further, and I don't, I again, know that this isn't in the budget for this, but I would like to make sure that as we move forward, we look at pedestrian bike crossing bridges and those types of solutions, not just for this area, Villa Terrace and Bellevue, but but other few places in the city, particularly in the middle where we don't have any vehicle crossings. And the last thing, and I know you've talked about this, is Hayward Park is in my district, and I understand right now that we cannot address the quiet zone until the whistle mic system alternatives are found. But I had two neighbors come here today. Both of them had to leave before they could speak. And so I would be reminisce if I didn't speak on their behalfs to say that we would like to continue to look at solutions for particularly Hayward Park pedestrian crossings. And again, maybe a bicycle pedestrian bridge might be a solution in that situation as well. That's all the questions I think I have. Do you have any questions about what we're suggesting or?
So I think we have direction. I just want to be very clear, Mary. You had a quite a list there of other improvements and suggestions. With that, I'll say we'll take those suggestions back. I can't guarantee that we can deliver on all those. But it's something that staff can take back and look into further. So thank you very much, and we have the direction that we need this evening.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. We are going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you, everyone. All right, and we're back. Tonight's final new business item, City Council Appointments to External Agencies and Liaison Roles Amendment. We'll have a presentation from our city clerk, Martin McTaggart. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. Good evening, Mayor Newsom, City Council. My name is Martin McTaggart, and I serve proudly as the city clerk for the city of San Mateo. I am a very, I have a very brief presentation to provide some context to the agenda item before you tonight on the proposed amendment to the city council's appointment to external agencies and liaison roles. On this slide is a detailed description of our process for council selection for appointment process. Each year, the city council assigns liaison roles to various external organizations and internal bodies to perform a variety of functions. The process for selecting liaison roles is detailed within the council's established rules and procedures. As summarized on this slide, the appointments are established in January of each year. City Clerk surveys the council's preferences for assignments, compiles this information, and works with the mayor to coordinate a draft proposed list of assignments to be considered for council approval. Over the years, the list of assignments has evolved based on numerous factors, including newly founded organization, external agencies becoming defunct, and direct councils, direct requests from council. This brings us to step two, which is a result of council direction during our last regular meeting on July 28, 2025, where the council directed staff to amend council assignments list to include the Police Activities League, or PAL. The decision before council tonight will be to provide staff with direction on which council member should serve this role throughout the remainder of this calendar year. Lastly, on step six, the council also provided staff with direction to further consider evaluating additional foundations to the to be added to the list of assignments, those including the Library Foundation, the Park and Recreation Foundation, as well as America Supporting Americans. Staff will be following the established process for assigning liaison roles in 2026, and this will include an evaluation of these additional agencies, as well as identifying those that need to be removed due to the list, due to no longer functioning. On this slide, we see the current assignments for council external liaison roles. To the right, you will see the 2025 list and Police Activities League appearing under item number 32. So this concludes my brief presentation. Our recommendation to council is to review and provide direction to amend council appointments list for 2025 to add a liaison to the San Mateo Police Activities League. And before doing so, we will verify if there's any request to speak on this item.
Deputy City Clerk, is there, are there any requests for public comment? No. Being that there are none, we will close public comment and open this up to a conversation with the council. Would anyone like to go first? Councilmember Fernandez.
Can I make a motion?
I think you should make sure. Do you want to make a motion, or do you have something you want to say? So no, not yet then. Go ahead and speak, and then you can make a motion.
I was just going to say that given the fact that my our colleague, Councilmember Swerko Goditski, has been working so closely with PAL over in her district, I think it would be appropriate to nominate her for this liaison role.
Yes, please, Deputy Mayor.
I I'm generally in support of of such things if others are in support of such things. I I just was curious. Martin, do what what is what does it entail to be a liaison? Or would this liaison be attending regular meetings? How often are the meetings?
Liaison roles vary depending on the organization which they support. So just to go back a slide here, you can see these are the the full list of external liaisons, and there's there's a variety there. The external liaison essentially serves as the point person for the city council is the the go-to representative of the city council, attending meetings where necessary. To use another example, where you have a city delegate to Congressman Mullen. So that would be an example where Congressman Mullen would like to engage with the city on a specific policy topic. That would be an opportunity for the external liaison to be the the primary point person, for example. So that may involve attending PAL meetings. It may simply be an external point of contact that the city council would be appointing a representative to.
I see. So it's it's different from having a seat on the PAL board be occupied at all times by a council member.
Correct.
And we're we're considering the same sort of relationship for the other foundations and so on.
Yeah, unfortunately, we didn't have enough time between the two meetings to fully vet those proposals. But as I mentioned in the presentation, we'll be bringing that back as part of the 2026 assignments list.
Thank you. No more comments for me.
My only comments are, sorry, did you have a comment? Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to bring this up in reports and announcements, but it's related. So I would really appreciate to be on the PAL liaison list because Hope, which is one of the organizations that I'm liaising with, has actually decided to disband. It's going in front of the supervisors for final sign off, so we'll probably not have that. And then some of my other assignments this year, like Measure S and personnel, don't really meet. So I'd love to help out more if I can.
I love the sound of that. I think we all do. So I am definitely in favor of Danielle taking this role for the rest of the year. And the only other two comments I had were that I think when it comes to the Park and Rec Foundation and the Library Foundation, as we've talked about in the past, we should try to look at having that liaison be the same person who liaises with the commissions. I also comment to the deputy mayor is that, you know, in those cases, they actually prefer that we're not in attendance to their meeting because they don't want us to be interfering. So it's really more of a behind the scenes being available for them. And I think it would be the same with the foundations, helping them give guidance. So those are my suggestions. And now I know there's a person next to me who is ready to make a motion. So please, Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, so I was like totally going to make a one, but can someone nominate me to be the alternate? Because I want to be the alternate. Thank you.
I don't know. Do we have to not? Okay, yeah, she's she's the alternate. All right. So you made the motion.
I move that we make Councilmember Swerko Goditski the liaison to PAL and Councilmember Fernandez the alternate.
And I will second.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We did it. What a meeting. All right. So we're now coming to the final part of our meeting, and that is querying the council for reports and announcements. Who would like to go first? Councilmembers Swerko Goditski.
I just had a quick thing. Since we have our new captain here, I wanted to see if we could get a quick update on how things are going with the RV engagement and the hot team.
Sorry.
The public wants to see your beautiful face.
Also, it's recorded better that way. So thank you.
Thank you. So because of all the education and the timeline, it's actually been very well received, and we've seen a lot of progress and a lot of movement and really no issues. I mean, very happy to report that to the council. So that's it, really. It's just been a smooth transition, smooth transition. And like I said, because of the education and the fact that we were out there for so many weeks prior to, there was a lot of movement that had to that came into play before the enforcement arm had to come, you know, happen.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Of course.
And then I just want to raise unrelated, raise a secondary issue to the council's attention, which is, and I know the city manager is very familiar, but there is construction happening at Parkside Elementary, and it was supposed to be complete earlier this month. Unfortunately, there's some delays as happens with construction. I think the residents are growing more and more frustrated, and so it would be wonderful if we could get another two by two set up or some other council members possibly reaching out and engaging with the school board and the superintendent. You know, unfortunately, like residents are calling me at this point crying. It's been a year and a half of constant drilling and noise, and I know that in the grand scheme of things, it's temporary. However, this continues to be a real concern for my district and the residents there. We have some very soft soil. So thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and comment on that? I I don't know. When is our next two by two?
So I'll go ahead and I'll look look into when that is. We've been doing every other month of recent, so I can go ahead and see when the next one is. But in addition, I know that staff is reaching out directly to the staff at the school district regarding recent photos you shared, I think, earlier today on on issues on the street. So more to come, and we'll provide an update to the council.
I guess another question for you, Mr. Manager, would be, do we? I mean, obviously, we don't want to get into a back and forth with the city and the school district. However, they have been violating noise ordinances, and I'm wondering, is there any any enforcement arm that we can we can put in play when they are, for example, working before 9:00 AM on a Saturday or working on a Sunday, which is supposed to be a day that they're not working? Is there anything we can do to to kind of?
So that's something that I can work with our chief building official on, just overall hours. When it comes to actual decibels, our staff has been out there, and the decibels do not reach the level that go over our noise ordinance here in their construction. But I have heard of them starting earlier on certain days, dates and times. It's also something that I can follow up with their superintendent as well. So how about I go back and have staff connect with the district and then also go connect with the superintendent to discuss next steps as well?
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Thank you, the mayor. A couple of things. One question for the city manager. Do you have an understanding of how the daylighting is going near the schools?
So we had a significant push over the summer. We're not completely there yet to get all the schools. I know that staff was trying to achieve that, but we're still working to get to. We, our hope was to get them all done before the school year, but we're still working on getting those daylightings done around the schools themselves. We had a strong push maybe two weeks ago. Really, really did a lot of work, I think, to the point where I think neighbors on the issue at Parkside Montessori said, what's going on with this crew? But it was our own crew doing the daylighting in that neighborhood next to the school as well. So I can get a clear update for the council and a weekly update here shortly.
That would be great. Thank you very much. And everybody's been working hard, but the community is definitely looking forward to that. Number two, excuse me, I wanted to sing the praises of Public Works because the Alameda and Parrot intersection, which has been a pilot traffic calming area for about four years now, has been completed. It's been completed beautifully. All the neighbors I've spoken to, many of whom originally were not at all sure they wanted to have take away the dog legs, and things are so far very happy with it. So I will keep walking. So I will keep walking around and seeing what I hear, but please pass, you know, kudos on to all the people involved in that. Really important. And then thirdly, something that many people may not be aware of, but August 18, 1920, the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote became a part of the Constitution. So I think we should all recognize that tonight. That's it.
Just one small thing, no, or a big thing. We had a loss this week of a community leader, the husband of longtime self-help-for-the-elderly advocate Debbie Soon, Dennis Soon, passed away last week, and so I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mr. Soon and all his contributions to San Mateo. And we send our condolences to Debbie.
Absolutely. We will do that, and we have another person that will also be adjourning in the memory of. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we had a number of folks give public comment earlier related to a community workforce agreement, public labor agreement discussion to be added to our agenda. And I, city manager, I know there's been some feedback from the city giving back to council related to some research that's been done, and I wondered if I could ask you about what you perceive to be a potential next step.
So the last direction that I received from the council was to provide a memo. I provided that memo update, and so that's kind of where I've left it off. So I'm looking at direction from the council regarding this item. I went ahead and I did what I said I was going to do at that point in time, and so that's just where we're at. So that's kind of where I left it.
Could council ask to have it put on an agenda in the future tonight, or would it be more of a blue-sky item?
So I would say, just from a staffing perspective, so that we can do a good job on looking at just, if the council wants to have a study session, we got to do our due diligence and get you guys the information. And I know that in talking with the Labor Council, head of the Labor Council who's in the audience this evening, that there's two other agencies currently going through negotiations, so I'd want to see what those look like specifically. I also heard from Mr. Holibur this evening that the college district has PLA specifically for their bond measure, so I don't know how that, you know, impacts everything else that's one-off, might not be on their other items. So just more research to do. The appropriate time, I'll just be honest with you, our staff, we're at full capacity right now, and so what I'd recommend is to bring this up during a blue-sky, which would be in February. If there's three council nodding heads that want to move forward with that at that time, then we can resource it and plan for it for a study session in the summer or early fall. So that's kind of where it'd be, and at that point in time, we can provide all the analysis, all the background, because I did my own research on the CWAs, and when you look at different cities who have adopted those CWAs, they tweak them uniquely for the needs of each of those cities. So just more information to gather and better understand from a staffing perspective.
I guess my question would be, do we have to wait till January before we can put it on the agenda? Or could we talk about agendizing it at a future meeting in the next month or two? And then that would be a study session to figure out how we want to proceed.
So legally, sure, you can add this to our future agenda, and right now is the appropriate time to decide whether or not to add our future agenda? I mean, technically speaking, but what the city manager is indicating is that for a project of this scale that would require significant resources to research it and compare what other jurisdictions have done, normally it's of the scale that would be considered during a blue-sky item, or during the blue-sky session. So you can consider it with other large projects. Typically, during reports and announcements, the council frequently decides whether to place an item on a future agenda. It's just the amount of resources that are involved, would be involved in this kind of item, is what the city manager is indicating.
I guess my other question would be, if we decided we want, so we agendized it for two months from now, came back and decided we wanted to move forward, it doesn't mean that it takes effect right away. I mean, we have a term to negotiate. So could we have that negotiation then be the blue-sky? Or tied in as a blue-sky item?
What I'm saying is, just to have the study session, if you want us to do a really good job of looking, you know, painting the full picture from the city staff perspective, that takes a lot of staff work to put that all together. I've gone and looked at other cities of how those study sessions work. They'll go back three years of looking at our projects, how does that all work out? Because then you would make the decision after that study session whether or not you want us to go and negotiate a CWA. And what are the parameters? You have to have guardrails overall. Then you have to go get special counsel in order to have negotiations. This is what Foster City is doing, and I know that you have experts in this area who will then, you know, work with the Labor Council's team in negotiating what a CWA is. But before we even get there, want to make sure that we do a really good job of what are pros, cons, and what staff's perspective is overall. You'll get different versions of CWAs. I know that Mountain View down the way has a CWA adopted, Martinez does as well. And so want to see what, you know, San Mateo County, what Foster City, if they have all that, that's all good information to bring so that we can have a discussion. That's just my recommendation. If you ask that we bring something forward ASAP, I will do, at least three of you guys tell me to do, but I will not have the information. I will have the memo that we've provided to council, we'll have the draft CWA that the Labor Council has provided as well, and the council can have a discussion. I don't have, and I will come with a list of the different projects that we're going to stop. And that's going to be the, that would be the pivot, because right now, staff is at, as I said, is at max capacity. And so I want to resource this appropriately to give the city appropriate time to be able to provide good work product for this council to better understand what the CWA means for us as an organization, what the impacts are, and whether or not you want to proceed forward. But if you want to do that without that, that's, that's fine. I'm just gonna, I'm just letting you know.
If I can interject here, I'll just also add that this is not on the agenda either. And just in terms of Brown Act compliance, your decision point right now is to either direct staff, if there are three nodding heads, to direct staff to add to our future agenda, or give staff more time to research and consider during blue-sky, or to do nothing. So that's your decision point right now, rather than further discussing the matter.
I would be okay putting it on the agenda. However, I would like to know what blue-sky priorities would be punted. So that could be a joint action?
That would be presented to us if we agendized it, right? That would be one of the things you'd bring to us.
That's correct, but I'm just gonna, once again, be very clear with this council that you will not get a full kind of in-depth analysis of what are the pros and cons of this from the city of San Mateo's perspective, specifically here. That's, I'm just being clear. But it's your guys' prerogative, this is your guys' decision as council.
I would be very interested in hearing about the other CWAs or the PLAs in the Mountain View and Foster City and San Mateo County and the community district. So I would like to have that research done, so that when we do have a study session, we're talking about a fuller picture. So.
My understa, Rob was suggesting bring it back in the next two months.
Right, but I don't think you can get, what I'm hearing the city manager say, he can't do the research. I'm all for having the discussion, but I want to have a discussion based on good facts. So.
I agree.
Okay, so what are we, what are we doing? I guess the question is, so we have three ways we can do this. Go ahead.
Would it be a happy, no one's happy, but would it be a medium if we could potentially agendize this at the first meeting in, like, October? That gives you like two months?
That still would not give us enough time to, so it's a heavy, it's a heavy lift to do all this research, because we would be looking internally for ourselves. If you don't want that research, that's totally fine, too. I'm happy to present this without that research. I'm just, you're giving your professional, just from my professional recommendation is, if we have a study session, typically we do in-depth analysis for the council on these initiatives. That's all.
If we're going to go for it, I'd just say rip the bandit off. I'm, I move that we pick this up next, that the agenda is for the next meeting.
To be clear, so it's, sorry to interject, but it's not a motion exactly.
It's mine, I am nodding my head, saying I would like to bring this back the next meeting.
Yes.
I would like to agendize a study session. I'd like to give you some time. I mean, if it can't be October, it can be November. What is the?
So I guess I would, also, there's work to be done in the research, then there, obviously there are the trade-offs that have to be made. So that would be, my question would be, what kind of time would you need in order to do that? Right? And you're saying February?
Well, what I was trying to do is, the workload already is underway, so what I can do is, if you want me to bring it in November, that's no problem. I'm just going to let you guys know what's going to, what's going to be, you know, deprioritized so that we can take this up. That's all I'm saying. It's just, it's, we're your staff. You just tell me where you want your resources and direct us. If you want the next meeting, what you're going to get is, you'll have the CWA that was provided to us, and I'll have you guys have the discussion, because the agenda reports are already due a week, Martin, how long ago? Last week, for that meeting, going through the process. But that's your guys' prerogative as a council.
I think November is a fair compromise.
That's kind of what I was thinking, too, is giving us some months to actually get some research, even if not all, we'd have some.
So I can't, so once again, I will go ahead and I can take back the feedback. Know that our November, if you look at our crystal ball, we already have full calendars all the way through to the end of this year, but I can look at what we can deprioritize and punt, if that's the council's prerogative. And I can do as best as we can of trying to get you as much research as possible. That's my job as your city manager. So you guys tell me what you want, and I'll try to deliver, but I'll just let you know that it might not be the best work that we put forward, but we'll do our best.
I guess my question is also, in finding out, because I think part of the discussion is, if you say we're going to have to push A, B, and C, I can think of three or four fairly major projects. And if you say we have to push them back six months in order to do this, then that might be a very different discussion than we have than, oh yeah, let's just do it. Because I want to have the discussion, but I want to have it based on really knowing what the options are.
Well, the way I'm looking at it is, is step change. So we have to start with having some baseline. If we don't have enough information, then I think we have to say, okay, this is what we have in November. Now go back and maybe it becomes a blue-sky, but like, we have to start somewhere and have the dialogue.
Right. So Mayor, if I may, just really quickly, I feel like, you know, at the, I don't want to say too much more, but we already got some, something of a response from the, from city staff initially. What I'm hearing is, if we were to bring it back short of performing a decent amount of research, we would probably get something very similar to that. And I think if you think through what that administrative report might be like, and what kind of a recommendation you might get from staff, that may not be the type of like conversation I am interested in having. So I would, I would say that I am willing to make this one of my blue-sky asks, but I don't really want to push other important items for a rushed study session.
So I'm hearing two Novembers, one blue-sky, one not right now. Nicole, where are you at?
November, I'm fine with it. So ideally next.
Okay, so I hear three Novembers, that's what I see. So then I'll come back and give you the menu of what we're gonna.
Is it possible that you could give us a memo in the next month or so of what would be deprioritized?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm here, you guys just direct me, here to do it.
All right, thank you. Anything else before we wrap?
Do you have any news, new business?
I have to do an adjournment. No, you're good. Oh, sorry. Okay, we're going to adjourn.
One second, staff has updates.
Sure. Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. So at the last city council meeting, staff was asked to report back on the status of our Mills Act reporting, and so we did go ahead and look into it, and I wanted to make sure that we reported out at a city council meeting for the record. And we have gone ahead and done preliminary inspections of our two Mills Act contract properties. We have preliminarily found that they are in compliance, and so we are in active contact with those property owners. We've, are in the process of receiving information from them, so we can do final inspections and get 10-year contract renewals in place with them. So just wanted to go ahead and give that status update.
Thank you.
One other update from staff, you might have seen on Sunday, that just tons of energy downtown, so rev up San Mateo in action when you really see it. My thanks to city staff. Not only did we have Head West on B, we had the farmer's market outside Drager's in their parking lot, and then thanks to Parks and Rec and the police department for Central Bark as well. So just, just a great Sunday, you know, just saw tons of people, tons of energy, so it was wonderful.
It's a great weekend, so, and thank you to all the staff. All right, we're going to close in adjournment. For Jill Wakeman Goodman, a lifelong San Mateo resident, she was a tireless advocate for justice, equality, and community, from marching in civil rights movements in Mississippi to decades of service with local organizations such as Samaritan House, Call Primrose, and the Interfaith Housing Network in Burlingame. Jill dedicated her life to lifting up others and fighting for dignity and fairness. As a longest-serving member of Burlingame First Presbyterian Church, she lived her faith through action, compassion, and courage. Her legacy of activism and love endures through the Jill Wakeman Foundation for Equality, established in her honor in 2009. And in the countless lives she touched, Jill passed away peacefully in her home in September, in San Mateo on August 1, 2025. She was 91 years old. We send heartfelt love and sympathy to her family as we honor her extraordinary life, and also, we will remember in this time, Dennis Soon, the husband of Debbie Soon. And so we'll take a moment of silence.